Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene City Council Successor Agency to the Westminster Development Agency meeting right now seven twenty-five P M. Wednesday, January twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Tom.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here. Thank you.
Councilmember Hope. Councilmember Hope.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Wen.
I'm here. Thank you.
All members of the council present.
Thank you so much, Nick. We have salute to the floor. We'll be Councilmember Doe. We'll be Councilmember Wen. Please stand.
Please rise and right hand above your heart. Okay. We'll repeat after me. I bless the legion to the flat of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head for invocation. Heavenly Father, we pray tonight to whatever source we turn to for strength. We pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Westminster with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that the decisions make this evening in the best interest of our city and its citizens. Amen. Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Doe. Thank you, Councilmember Wen. Next, we have City Attorney Close Session Report.
There was one item on the closed session agenda related to an existing case. There was a discussion and direction given by council, but there's nothing further to report.
Thank you so much, City Attorney. Next, we have Expertique Communication. I see none. City Black Report.
Yes, so I'd like to announce that there is late communication e-commerce received for oral communications and public hearing items four point one and four point two, which are posted and available on our city website. I'd like, I'd also like to add that there are upcoming redistricting workshops on January twenty-seventh from twelve to one thirty P M in the Community Services Building, and on January thirty-first at the Miriam Warren Community Building from seven to eight thirty P M. These maps and tools are available via our city website, and they may be submitted and shared to districts at westminster-ca.gov. And as a reminder, these maps are due by February first. And lastly, I'd like to introduce interim Assistant City Manager Adolf Ozeda to give us a COVID update.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I'm standing in for Robert Acosta, our Emergency Services Coordinator, who usually provides the COVID update. He had an unexpected emergency arise, so I will be reading his report as presented to me just a few hours ago by Robert. So I will begin now. There are positive signs in certain areas of the country that COVID nineteen has peaked and in some areas declining. Locally, Orange County appears to be leveling off, but key metrics such as positivity, case count, and hospitalizations are still at concerning levels. Testing demand at kiosks is down over fifty percent from only a few weeks ago. A good example is one of our local kiosks ran over two hundred tests for a sustained period since the beginning of the year. Now they're testing about sixty to seventy per day. When matched to other OC trend lines, it is likely that the worst of this particular spike is behind us. However, it is important to keep in mind, current conditions continue to be described as widespread. If you recall, the purple tier that we followed for several years during the pandemic. With the positivity rate at almost twenty-five percent, this means that one out of four people testing are testing positive for COVID. So this is not, this is definitely not a time to put our guard down. Many surrounding cities are modifying workplace protocols and rescheduling many community events. For example, Orange County CERT program is implementing a hybrid class, where the majority of the classes will be completed online. Also, many cities within the county are maintaining closed lobbies and remote work options for their employees. Internally, we continue to experience COVID cases. However, the new infection rate is slowing. We continue to mandate and monitor health and safety practices internally. Our stock of rapid tests and P P E remain adequate. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. Any questions or concerns from any members of City Council for that report? Okay. I see none. So next would be City Manager Report.
I should have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. I don't see any special presentation, so we have oral communication.
So this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. At this time, I'll be reading e-commerce received as well as allowing members of the public to speak for a total of five minutes. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand, and when I call your name, I will allow you to speak. So if I could please ask the interpreter to translate that.
At this moment, if you want to speak, please raise your hand. You can speak by raising your hand. Raise 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 your hand. Thank you.
Okay, so the first e-comment received was from Vin Tran. And in summary, the individual expressed concern regarding council behavior and fighting with each other and opposed the building of the Quan Chi Monument. The second e-comment received was from Sandy Nguyen. And this individual expressed concern regarding comments made by Councilmember Monzo at the January twelfth City Council meeting. And the thirty comment received was from Nam Quan Wen. And he expressed concern regarding PD's ability to handle the traffic and public safety tasks involved for the tep parade during the pandemic in spite of Omicron, and stated that the event could serve as a COVID super-spreader. And that completes the e-commerce portion. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand.
May I ask some questions, please? Are you summarizing those e-comment? Are you?
Yes, I'm summarizing those ecomments. They are posted on our city website. It's, the full e-comment is posted and available on our city website, and they're also hyperlinked to our agendas.
Okay, is that a new policy that we summarize all the e-comment? We don't read it verbatim?
It's actually not a new policy. We've been doing it in the, we've listed it in our agenda that we would read it in full or in summary. And there are times that I have read it in summary in the past.
Okay, okay. This is not something new, right? Well, at least this is the first time I noticed it's a summary. Okay, thank you.
So our first speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. If CityNet is here, please pull item three point nine, the CityNet reports for September through December, and ask why these reports weren't presented to you monthly and why the average monthly contacts and street exits for the last six months of twenty-twenty-one are about half of what they were for the first six months. I was the only member of the public present at the strategic planning meeting last week, item five point one. I was disappointed Councilman Doe was not in this very important session where council members and key staff actually worked together to set priorities for our city. The common theme in the weaknesses and challenges list is that this council's infighting is destroying our city. The common theme in the strengths and accomplishments list is the much improved executive leadership. To that end, council should just appoint Christine Corden as the permanent city manager now, and she should appoint Adolf Ozeda as the permanent assistant city manager. Those two, as interims, have done more good for this city and staff in just a few months than their predecessors did over decades. Imagine how much more good they could do if council would just stop fighting and sucking up their time with personal vendettas. Let's hope the strategic plan is a total restart for this council. Councilwoman Ho requested item five point two to consider creating a policy for interactions between city staff and outside parties. Given our current council makeup, that's probably a good idea. I support strong, well-defined policies, but only if they are adhered to and strictly enforced, which is not usually the case. This policy would not be necessary if we didn't have corrupt council members who are in bed with their campaign donors and fervent supporters willing to promote them at any cost. In ten years, people will look back at all of these policies and think to themselves, wow, that city council must have been really effed up, and they won't be wrong. Item five point three is ridiculous. Councilman Wen, this is really rich coming from you. What a hypocrite. Staff had to search far and wide to find just one city in San Diego County with such a policy. The real problem is all five of you spend way too much time fighting and trying to upstage one another by insisting on getting the last word in on things that don't really matter. But there are very important matters that come before this council that do warrant lengthy discussions and debate before voting. The other problem is we have a mayor who refuses to run council meetings, abiding by Robert's rules of order, and a city attorney unwilling to redirect the mayor when needed. I can't wait for the voters to eliminate the elected mayor position and see how others run these meetings. After healthy discussion and debate, any council member can motion to call for the question and debate. You just have to be sure you don't end debate prematurely and do consider all relevant information and everyone's point of view. But most of the time, you are all just repeating the same thing over and over again, getting progressively louder, thinking that will sway others. Council, you don't need this policy. What you do need is to change your behavior. Yesterday, I emailed the city attorney numerous grammatical capitalization and format corrections and inconsistencies that need to be fixed in the resolution of Senator Mayor Ta, item five point four. The city attorney refused to make the changes, saying he was afraid to do so because it might change the context. False. His own staff report said he did make minor grammar and format changes, so why not these? It's embarrassing for the city to issue a formal resolution with so many errors and inconsistencies in it. And I'm sure Councilman Doe, who proposed this resolution, would want it done right. Councilwoman Ho is requesting item six point one to modify the approval process for findings of public convenience or necessity. Yet she was one of the three council members that approved the bad resolution in May twenty-twenty-one, but now she wants to rescind it. Vice Mayor Manzo, Councilman Doe, and I all presented a strong case to oppose it back then. So what changed your mind, Councilwoman Ho? Why hasn't the city recruited vacancies on the Planning Commission Citizens Oversight Committee and Community Services and Recreation Commission that have been vacant for over a month now? Thank you, Chief Linay, for squelching the rumors spread on Vietnamese media, specifically on fake news expert Nam Quan Wen's trust media YouTube channel that you want to cancel the tep parade in today's Orange County Register article. Mayor Ton, Councilman Wen have done nothing to stop the fake news as usual. The last regular council meeting adjourned after three A M because of council members fighting, bickering, and trying to upstage one another. Westminster residents are outraged by this behavior, and we're just plain sick of it. All five of you have completely lost sight of the priorities of this city and its residents. There is very little business of the people being done. Instead, council is sucking up precious city resources on agenda items that are not important to the residents, just personal vendettas against each other, like the year-long Quan Chi Monument debate. Great comments from Vin Tran on the monument tonight, by the way. Council members are casting votes based on their political agendas and campaigns, not what is in the best interest of the people they serve. All five of you have completely ignored the repeated passionate pleas, remark residents, to get back on track and start representing us, the people. So you know what? Shape up or ship out. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is, we. You may begin. If you're on the phone, if you press star nine, you can unmute yourself. Or star six, I'm sorry. So if anybody else would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand.
If you want to speak, please raise your hand. 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 Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
All right. Well, with that, I close oral communication. Next, we have Consent Calendar. All matters, listen to the consent calendar. I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion, although by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of City Council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
I want to pull item three point nine. And I'm going to approve the rest.
Three point nine? Please.
I like to pull item three point four for separate voted.
Okay. Three point four and three point nine. Anything else?
Motion to.
All right, so we have the motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar, but three point four and three point nine.
Second.
So who make a motion? I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Okay, Vice Mayor make a motion. And second, but all right. Roll call vote, please.
So Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Hope.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero to approve the consent calendar except for items three point four and three point nine.
All right, so Councilmember Wen, pull three point four.
I just want to pull it so that we can vote it separately from the rest.
Okay, all right. So who goes to make a motion to brew three point four?
A motion approved.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we have the motion and second to brew three point four. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
No.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
No, okay.
That motion carried three, two, with Councilmember Nguyen and Mayor Ta voting no, and that was to adopt an ordinance number twenty-five eighty-one entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Westminster, California, adding Chapter Seventy, Conflicts of Interest for Public Officials of Title II Administration and Personnel of the Westminster Municipal Code Regarding Conflicts of Interest. That was to conduct a second reading, read by title only, and wait for the reading.
All right, and item three point nine, cool five by Vice Mayor Manzo.
Do we have a representative from CityNet for staff report?
Oh, you know, so let me, let me pull over staff, and then we do have a representative from CityNet. Just a second. All right, so we have Commander McCormick and Valerie Carter from CityNet here.
Can you also include Jessica Bruce on this? She's the primary presenter.
Got it. Okay, there she is. All right.
Hi, good evening, council and mayor. My name is Jessica Bruce, and I am the chief program officer with CityNet. And I am here today to go over the last three months of data that we, of the work that we've done in the city. So from October to December thirty-first, we had a hundred and seventy-three contacts in the city. And of those a hundred and seventy-three contract contacts, we had sixteen street exits. Sixteen street exits of those sixteen twelve went to permanent housing. We have seen a decrease in shelter availability in the last three months due to COVID, so we've not had as many clients being able to active actively be able to enter the Yale Shelter, which is the county round shelter. So we have really been focusing on permanent housing with our clients. So twelve clients moving into permanent housing within a three-month period from one area of the city of Westminster is a pretty good outcome, considering, you know, the lack of housing and, you know, the many of challenges that we have with trying to place our clientele into permanent housing. We're hoping that in the spring, and as we get down, the Omicron, you know, this peak we're in right now decreases, we will have the opportunity to, with the shelters will open up and increase that capacity so that more clients can access shelter and get into the coordinated entry system. So right now, as when we are in the city, sixteen hours a week, making sure that we're engaging client, as many clients in that small span as we can, and getting them connected to the coordinated entry system to be matched to a longer-term place, housing placement. I'm sorry, my video is not on tonight. I'm, my computer right now just decided not to be able to work on video, so I apologize. But please, if there's any questions from council, I would love to answer any questions you have.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Ms. Bruce. I have a question on some of these contacts that you mentioned. Were these any, any of these at the Beach Boulevard and kind of the twenty-two freeway location?
Yes, as you can see, and we, when you receive your monthly reports, we also place a map in those locations. So we, yes, we have been hitting that area, but I'm assuming Chief McCormick, I know that Officer Perez is doing some work over at that twenty-two location. So maybe the PD would like to add to kind of what our efforts have been in that area.
And I also, another follow-up question to that, the same location, has any, anybody from that location accepted any help?
I would have to pull, I can, you know, if, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer right off the second, but Vice Mayor, I can pull that data for you and email it over to you this evening.
Yes, because I think in the past, I mean, I had asked this question before, as far as on the report, when it states the number of contacts. I had asked if we can have the location of the contact and the outcome of that particular contact, and I still don't see it on here. So, I mean, we're just, there's no way for us to know what transpired during that said contact. Is there, is there a log? Are you, do you guys log each contact?
Yes, we use survey one, two, three, which is in the H M I S system. So every encounter we have, we, you know, drop a pen at that location, marking the location, and then the client that we're interacting with at that location. So I can send you over the log of everybody we've interacted with. It will just be an H M I S I D number. But I, you know, I'll have to get with our data team to pull that information, and then I will also get with our outreach team to see, you know, which clients have accepted services from the twenty-two location. Unfortunately, I do not have that information on this night.
And I, thank you. And I know that in the past, we've had a few coordinated cleanup events at that particular location. Right now, driving there is pretty, pretty bad. Is there currently any efforts to get that cleaned up? Our agency, like I said, I know we've done, we had we have partnered up with Garden Grove, Caltrans, and I think Petro at one time. Is there another one planned? Can you hear any time shortly?
I can answer that for you, Valerie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So we have had two cleanup events scheduled in the last couple of months with Caltrans and the C H P, which those areas that you see over there at Beach and the twenty-two, excuse me, behind the Garden Grove Inn, up on the embankment, underneath the freeway is all state property, and then the cloverleaf south of the freeway as well is state property. Caltrans has canceled the last two cleanup events, the last of which was scheduled for last week on the twentieth. Those events were, were canceled by Caltrans. We don't have any control over that. We don't have control over when they schedule those events because they are using a contract company that comes out and does the cleanup. And that contract company is the primary company that is used throughout this entire region up in L.A. County and Orange County. We, myself and our two H L Os, we went out yesterday afternoon with the members of our CPU unit from the city, and we spent about four and a half to five hours cleaning that up. We cleaned up the entire area underneath the twenty-two freeway at Beach Boulevard. We requested that C H P meet us out there. They sent four units along with a sergeant and a lieutenant. And we discussed with them the need for them to pay a little bit more attention to those areas. We came up with some ideas that we're going to work on with the C H P so that we can collaborate a little bit more with them and get the assistance from them to take care of those areas which are state property. So those areas are being addressed. We also have that area to the rear of Costco, which is also state area as well. So we are working on that. And like I said, we spent about five hours yesterday cleaning that up. So, and I, when I left the city this afternoon, that area was still cleared out. And C H P responded back out this morning to work on the area behind the Garden Grove Inn, which is actually falls in the city of Garden Grove, but that ice plant area is the jurisdiction of the state.
Thank you for that. And I'm assuming you guys, when we're out there, we're really trying to do our best to make them, make the people living there aware of the, all the services out there, correct?
Correct. Most of those people are people that we contact on a routine basis. Most of those people have shown interest in services, but then when it comes down to keeping their appointments with the folks from CityNet, they typically fail to show up. We try to locate them again out in the field when we have CityNet with us so that we go to them. And then once we are teamed up out there with them with CityNet, they usually turn the other way, and they don't want the services any longer. So it's one of those situations to where when we first introduce them to the services, tell them what we can offer, tell them we can, we can try and provide. They would like the services when, then when it comes down to it, they, they're very hesitant to do it, and they don't, most of them do not want to go into the shelter environment due to the rules that they would have to follow. And then they fail to show up for any of their appointments or recontact CityNet.
And the idea, you guys make them aware of kind of the impacts that they, that's created by just being out there and not taking advantage of the, these services. I mean.
Absolutely. Like I said, many of these people are people that we contact on a routine basis. So we, we kind of have a relationship with them, and we will sit and we will, we will talk with them and chat with them and try to get them to understand that if they were to take on some of these services, their lifestyle might take a change for the better, and we can get them down to the road to success. We have had some success stories. And I think that's what Valerie was talking about, that she can provide for you guys. Just during the holidays, we did place a few families. We, in fact, we placed a single mother of four into permanent housing. And we've, we've placed some elderly folks into permanent housing, or temporary housing rather, that were on the road to permanent homelessness. This Friday, we're working on moving a lady into some temporary housing who has been evicted from her, her location. And we've gotten some volunteers to assist us with, with packing up her, her belongings in her house, getting those into a storage unit, and then getting her into some temporary housing while we, we search for some more permanent environment for her.
Great, sounds great. Thank you for that. Just in the future, I don't know if it's possible, but like I said, to have these contacts in the report. You know, the locations, I mean, eighty-five, I mean, one, one is eighty-five, but I don't see eighty-five, you know, markers on the map, and I would like, be nice to know what the outcome of those contacts were.
I will get with Valerie offline and make sure that we, we get some of that information for you.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
May I have may I have a question for Commander? What is the limitation for the for the city as well as the police department to get involved with the contact as well as cleaning up the area that so-called we call it belong to state property?
So we routinely speak with the the person that's in charge of, I want to say, I think his title is encampment specialist. I routinely talk to him. We meet with him along with Garden Grove PD and the CHP to talk about different ideas for fixing this area. One of the one of the solutions they've come up with, and I believe it's on the books for Caltrans in in the year twenty twenty-two, is to install rod iron fencing underneath the twenty-two freeway at Beach Boulevard to to keep them from from going up that hill again and taking over that area. So we we meet with the gentleman from Caltrans probably on a monthly basis, myself, the folks from Garden Grove PD, R two HLOs from Westminster. And then again, the the sergeant from the CHP normally joins us. We meet out there, right there at Beach and the twenty-two. We talk about ideas. One of the other, one of the, just as an example, one of the things they did in the city of Garden Grove over at Trask and Newland was they put up that that rod iron fencing that we're talking about. And that has driven their calls for service down to zero. So that's why we introduced it to to Caltrans last year. And Caltrans was able to to get that approved. And it's, I don't know when it's scheduled for this year. He just told me it's on the on the books for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, you know, a few months back, excuse me, me and former councilman, so as you can trail, we walk around that area. And, you know, it's a lot of trash, a lot of homeless encampment there. But so one interesting observation I have that the area on the west side of Beach underneath the freeway seems to have, I mean, I'm talking about the east side, the opposite side of that, the east side underneath the twenty-two freeway seems like they were free of homeless encampment. Do we know, is there an explanation to that? And if you know, is that the wind direction? Or for some, for some reason, it's just nice and clean compared to the the west side of the freeway?
I I understand what you're saying. The the city of Garden Grove, their police department has four HLOs. They call home, they call them special resource officers. They do not have the staffing issues that we're experiencing right now at the police department. Our HLOs are typically pulled into patrol at least two days out of their four-day work week. Oftentimes, it's three days out of the work week. Therefore, they're tied up working patrol throughout the day. The HLOs from Garden Grove don't have those issues, those staffing issues. So they are able to address those areas on them every single morning. They 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 start much earlier. They go out, they hit those areas. So they clear those areas out before most people are driving down Beach Boulevard to come to work. This week, we've been able to get our HLOs freed up most of the week. We cleaned up, like I said, we cleaned up underneath that freeway yesterday. And we were about out cleaning up behind Costco today. And we're going to continue to clean it behind Costco tomorrow. And again, those aren't our areas of responsibility. That that's the responsibility of Caltrans, but it is affects our city. And that's why we have spent a lot of time on it. One of the things we were trying to do the last few months is we've been trying to get the state on board with us more on taking responsibility for those areas. If you've noticed, they did install the needed signage on either side of the freeway coming down Beach Boulevard. So on the north and south sides, they they install the necessary signage so that enforcement can start being done if people continue to to habitate underneath that freeway.
Thank you very much, Commander. Appreciate that.
Commander McCormick, I have a couple, or maybe this is a, I don't know if we can answer this. Where are we on addressing, we were supposed to hire a couple of, I think there's called community liaison officers? That were supposed just to work on the homeless.
So we we have, we went through the interview process and that list was certified by Human Resources. And the 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 two individuals that came out, one and two on the list, they have been, their names have been given to our professional standards unit and they are beginning the background process right now.
Okay. And as far as the cleanup can, I mean, can we, I understand your staffing. You know, we all know where we're staffing challenges are right now, including, you know, a lot of officers are, you know, dealing with mandates and all kinds of other issues. But what about just, we know this is a hotspot area. And, you know, maybe have a CPU out there a little bit more with, you know, to address these 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 hotspot areas and get these cleaned up. I mean, I I also saw what Councilmember Doe was mentioning, and I get that question asked is like, why on the Garden Grove side, it's a lot cleaner than, why is everybody on the Westminster side of the street? And yeah, I have no, no answers for that question, you know. So I mean, if you can just come up, I understand you're trying to brainstorm solutions or not solutions, something just to mitigate it, make it a little better. But I mean, this is a really bad area. And I get countless calls and emails about it. And to be honest, it does make us look pretty, like we're dropping the ball on this situation. I know we're not, I know we have challenges and I try to explain those challenges. But, you know, some of the community doesn't want to hear that, you know. So if we can just focus on what we can do to make this area better.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, you know, Vice Mayor Manzo. I mean, you know, the the police department across the nation have to facing a lot of challenges in terms of dealing with homelessness because of court cases set precedent across the nation that limit the police department, the police officer, how to, let's, they set a parameter how to deal with homelessness because homelessness is not a crime. So and and how, and it's also set precedent on how the property of of those homeless people to a to a lot of people, it's trash, but to them it's a property and it's had to be respected and regulated, taken account, inventory stored properly. And there's a proper procedure to do a lot of stuff. So that's why, you know, our police department, just like any other police department, would love to help the community as well as, you know, private resident businesses. But there's a lot of restriction that they impose by the Supreme Court. So I totally understand, you know, how under the choice under the Westminster Police Department have to deal with some. Just so you know.
If I could add, if I could add something, sir, it just as important is our CPU guys, they do, they do a phenomenal job. And if it wasn't for them, we couldn't, we couldn't have as many of the success stories we do have. And I could not let them go into an encampment area or that area under the freeway without police presence just for their safety. And oftentimes, there's two seat, like yesterday, there was, we had two CPU personnel with us. I, in good conscience, could not let them do that on their own. Therefore, if we don't have officers available to escort them in there, then we can't let those those folks go in there and risk their safety, getting injured or worse while they're working because they they do great work for us and we need to keep them safe.
Yes, thank you. That is, that is a good point. No, I appreciate everything that we're doing, all the efforts. I know it's a challenging situation and there's no silver bullet. It's just, and I appreciate you guys doing your best to to deal with it. But anyways, thank you for all your hard work out there. Appreciate it.
I don't know if anybody posed this question to City, CityNet? Is there a CityNet person representing you?
Yes.
Yes, I seem to remember just as speaker earlier public for mentioning that, you know, previously, I believe we got a monthly report. But this time it seems to accumulated over like September, the three and a half months of together. So is there any way we could have it back to monthly again?
You do, we do send monthly reports. I was just asked today to summarize the last three months, but yes, we do still send monthly reports to the city. And I'll make sure I send, Christine, are you copying all those? I can make sure that you're copying on the send to the council.
I, you know what, we, I stopped getting them and we had followed up to try to get them. That's why we haven't had any on the agenda because we just weren't getting them for the agendas. So this is the catch up.
Okay, great. I'll add you to the mailing list. I know the police department gets it, but I will also add you to the mailing list.
Okay, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll circle back with you on who needs to get it aside from me. Okay.
Perfect. I have a question. I do have a question for staff. So do we post or update the report from CityNet regarding issue homelessness on our city website? I think it would be helpful if we have that available on the website. So any member from the community could able to enter the website and read a report. I'm not really sure whether or not we have that available on our city website. But I think it would be helpful. Can you make it happen?
Yeah, and I I haven't been on the police web page. There may already be information that exists on the city's webpage. I mean, not on cities, but on the the police department's side of the website. But if it's, if it's not, we'll make sure it happens.
Yes, because I think it'd really helpful if, you know, we post all the information from CityNet. So at least a member of from the community, they they understand that our city, we we try our best that we could be able to show the community that we've been working on that with the support for our police department. Yes, I think this would be helpful. Yes.
Can I, thank you, Mary. That does, I think that's a great idea. Before we go, I will also like to mention, and Commander McCormick can speak to this, the efforts that the the community, the faith-based community is putting together. I know they had a meeting yesterday. I missed that meeting. I also want to, you know, give them, you know, to highlight their efforts. And Commander McCormick knows a little bit more about, I don't know if he attended yesterday's meeting.
Yes, it was, it was on Monday night.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, excuse me, Monday night, yes, Monday. Yeah, you know, they're they're also doing a good job. I think it's Pastor Paul Park is leading the the charge on that. Can you speak a little bit about what transpired in the your Monday meeting?
Sure. We we talked about some of the things that we did during the month of December, the the hot food giveaway that we did where we we took some hot meals out, the homeless folks, we contacted them. Our faith-based group members sat and spoke with them as well. So it wasn't just police officers going out and talking to them. We supplied them with hygiene kits. We gave them some warm clothing, jackets if they needed them. We have a, we've got a lot of clothing and shoes and stuff that's been donated to our program. A lot of it has been donated by our officers that have brought stuff in. So we have a surplus of that at our station. We take that out with us. And so on those particular days, we we took some hygiene kits out. We talked to folks. We we tried to get introduce them to services. We got them some warm clothing, some clean clothing and some dry clothing and food when we had it with us. On one particular day, we took out twenty-five hot meals and handed those out. And then again, our faith-based folks spent time talking with with the people that we contacted away from us so that it wasn't just police officers there. It was our faith-based groups trying to touch base with them and get them on board with what we can offer. We also did a shoe giveaway to where we supplied sixty-five different families with shoes for kids that otherwise would have gone without new shoes during the holidays. So they were able to go back to school with brand new shoes. And our faith-based group facilitated that at Hope Community Church. The HLO officers were also down there. We also during the Thanksgiving period supplied hot meals to families that were in need. And then coming up here in the near future, we're going to be holding an event at the WFRC for some families that are in need of clothing and food and things of that nature. We're also still putting on the Laundry of Love Days to where we're getting donations to help folks out with doing their laundry. We're still getting donations of quarters for these folks at the laundromats. And then coming up, we're going to be doing some pop-up events where we're going to be setting up some some booths and tables with our coalition folks so that they can introduce themselves to the community and let community members know what what in fact we're doing out there and to try and get more folks involved in our mission.
Great. Sounds like a lot of great, great work being done out there. Thank you. Thank you for that.
All right. So with that, I would like to move to receive and file for item.
A second. A second.
All right, we have a motion and second.
That motion was made by Mayor Ton, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo, and that was to receive and file. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Wen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Mayor Ta, I would like to work on urgency item to, in addition to the agenda today. May I?
Okay, so Councilmember Wen, can you tell what what is your urgency item?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and the councils, from the report that we just heard from the interim assistant manager, reading reports from staff and hearing the numbers of our employees detected with COVID. And with the number of people in our community detected with COVID increased rapidly every day. Like we just heard that when our floor tested and, you know, got detected with COVID, which is equivalent to the twenty-five percent tested. I am very concerned if we, the city, don't have any plans in place to mitigate the spread of COVID. I'm not sure if there were any safety plans from staff to inform the people from the people in our community. So, you know, I would like to work on an urgency item to get an updates from staff as well as having a chance for our council and staff to discuss the proper safety planning to protect, to further protect our community if there was a plan already. So I think it's much needed for us to spend some time on this. So I would like to ask to add to the agenda today. And I'm not sure what section is that going to be, but I would think that is for under regular business, five point five.
All right, I think that's a good urgency item. I second that request.
Okay, and Mayor, just for the record, urgency item is going to be added by a fourth fitted vote, which includes finding that the issue arose after the agenda was posted and involves something that cannot wait or needs to be addressed urgently.
All right. So we have the motion and a second to.
I have, I have a, I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
It sound very familiar. Is that the same emergency agenda that you you tried to walk on the last council meeting, Councilman Wen?
Yes.
Okay, so you have ample time to put it on the agenda, you know, because the time transpired between the two meetings. May I ask why you didn't put it on the
Yes.
Agenda?
I'm more than happy to answer that question, Councilmember Doe. First of all, you know, when we have the meeting last time, I put that on the urgency item and it was shut down. And you know that in order for us to get into the agenda, we have to get the item the next day. Okay, because the time that we said that they, you have to put it in the next day. At the time that we, you know, just a day before, I put it in and and the council shut down. So I don't, you know, have a chance. I mean, I, you know, why put it back in? But because of the information that we get, you know, continuously, the 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 number of COVID detected is increased until today. So, you know, I think that, you know, it wasn't for us to spend some time to discuss about it, no matter what. But, you know, as a, you know, as a council members, and we need to have an update from staff and we need to spend some time to talk about it, whatever it is turn out, you know, but, you know, people are informed, we are informed. And I think it's, that that's a reason.
Oh, yeah, okay. I thank you. I appreciate that because I remember you asked to walk on the emergency. Oh, yeah. Okay. Uh, thank, thank you. I, I appreciate that because I remember you asked to walk on the emergency agenda, pretty much the same thing last, last
Right, right.
Meeting and we, uh, my, uh, I voted no because the, uh, the agenda was full and sure enough, we didn't get out of there until like three o'clock in the morning. So, but you have ample time to, um, um, forward your agenda item to staff so that they can have, uh, adequate time to prepare uh, a staff report for the entire city council to a, at least have something to digest, um, prior to the, uh, to the, uh, uh, meeting. But apparently you did not do that. So I would like to make a substitute motion to add, uh, Councilman Nguyen's, uh, request to the next, uh, uh, agenda, um, uh, the next council meeting instead. Because right now we don't have any staff report. So it's just like, um, we don't know what we're gonna talk about. And, uh, the, uh, right now, the, the current situation in the state and a county has not imposed any restriction on COVID yet. So, um, I'd like to make that substitute motion.
Uh, before that, can I go ahead and respond to your, you, you mentioned that we have ample times. I understand what you're trying to say, but the, remember, if you don't get it into the next day, which is we already, you know, stay up to three o'clock in the morning. The next day we have to get the item in or else we are not going to get it on the agenda.
Oh, so you missed a vote and you.
Point. Okay.
I, I understand. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Uh, can I, is there a second for the substitute motion? Okay, here, hearing. I'm sorry. Okay.
That's reasonable.
All right. So we have the, uh, we have the super two motion and second for the super two motion. Am I, am I correct?
Yes. So the substitute motion will be voted on first, and that would be to place this item on the next agenda as opposed to trying to walk it on as an urgency item at this agenda.
So just so every, everybody knows, the next meeting is February ninth.
Yes, oh, I understand. So I, I hope we're gonna have a very comprehensive staff report so to, so that we can, uh, further discuss this, uh, um, issue.
I don't mind speaking about it, but I'm kind of, I'm not, I'm kind of not too sure what Councilmember Nguyen was, what he wanted to speak about. Just want to report on the planning, what the city is doing as far as to address the COVID nineteen. Is that what it is?
Yes, I, I, I make it very clear and I, I will say it again. You know, we would like to, uh, get updated from staff, uh, information or any of plans already in place to mitigate the, the, the spread of the COVID. And at the same time, you know, uh, if not, then we have some time to, to discuss about the plan. You know, so that we can give it out to the community, make sure that, you know, you do this, do that. You know, it's just, it's just a time that we can, we get an update and also discuss about it. That's all.
Okay.
Are, are you gonna propose that we're gonna cancel the tetray?
I did not. I did not say anything about it. I'm, you know, clear, clear, clearly said.
How for a question, please?
Yeah, and, and we can't have a discussion until there's an item on the agenda. So.
All right. So if the council want to, uh, really want to vote on this, you know, so we have the super two and motion on super two on the floor.
So the motion, just to be clear, is to add it to the next agenda. That's what's being voted on right now.
Okay.
Councilmember Doe.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo. I mean, Councilmember Nguyen.
Say that again, please.
You did.
Your vote.
Super two motion.
Yeah, yeah. No.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
I know.
And Mayor Ta.
No.
That motion.
So let me understand something. You, you don't want to put it on the
Next.
Next meeting. And okay. So are you gonna walk it on, uh, it's an emergency item next meeting again or?
Okay. So right now we go back.
I'm just concerned.
Original motion. Am I right?
I just want to clarify as Vice Mayor Monzo voting no.
I'm voting no to the next, next agenda.
So you have to say yes.
Okay. So we, um, I don't want it. I think we need to talk about it.
Okay. So we, we had now have the, uh, motion, the primary motion, which is to walk on an urgency item, which again requires a four-fifth vote to walk on an item that has not met the seventy-two hour posting requirement and that there's an urgency to discuss it.
Right. All right. So we have the motion and second on the floor to, uh, place an urgency item on agenda tonight. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Doe.
No.
Councilmember Ho.
No.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion failed.
The motion fails.
All right. Okay. So, uh, next we have public hearings.
So due to COVID nineteen restrictions, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. Members of the public who wish to address the city council were able to in writing up to twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. In lieu of written comments, members of the public who wish to speak tonight may raise their hands or have the opportunity to send a request in advance, which I did not, um, I did receive two, one for four point one and one for four point two. And with that said, speakers will have a total of five minutes to speak.
All right. Let's open a public hearing. The first item, four point one case number twenty twenty-one dash zero two two nine, public hearing in consideration and adoption of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element update to the Westminster general plan. We may have a staff report.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Debbie Carita, your interim community development director. This item is the public hearing for consideration of adoption of the housing element update to the city's general plan. This is a culmination of eighteen plus months uh, of process, during which time the community development department staff worked with a consultant, Amanda Troppiano of De novo Planning, to go through this process and prepare the documents. We have a PowerPoint presentation that she will be sharing with you in a moment on this item. Before she begins, I want to acknowledge the hard work of the members of the planning and housing staffs to complete this housing element update. It was truly a team effort. I especially want to recognize Sandy Kim, who served as the project manager for this important project. With that, I will turn it over, turn the presentation over to Ms. Troppiano.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Amanda Troppiano and I am a principal with De novo Planning Group. I will be sharing a brief presentation with you and available to answer any questions. So with that, let me go ahead and just share my screen. And we can go ahead and get started. So tonight we're here specifically to discuss the draft twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element for the city of Westminster. As was mentioned previously, this is the culmination of a year and a half long process by which the staff worked closely with the community, uh, planning commission and with the city council to develop a housing element that reflects the community's priorities and sets the stage for future development over the next eight years. The city has worked diligently to conduct a multilingual public engagement program during a time that has been extremely challenging. We have creatively approached this process to connect with community members online through an electronic survey, hosting multilingual virtual workshops, circulating a draft of the document for public review, receiving public comments on the draft, hosting a virtual community open house in November of last year, and facilitating a public hearing with the planning commission on December first of twenty twenty-one. In addition, at the, uh, beginning of the project, a direct mailer was sent to every resident and business in the city of Westminster, requesting information on the community's priorities for future housing needs. Other general advertisements were also circulated, including shelter, bus shelter ads, radio ads, social media posts and community newsletter posts. So a bit about the background of the housing element, and some of this may feel familiar for the council, but for the purposes of sharing with the public tonight, I did want to, uh, just remind everyone about the background of our housing element and what brings us here tonight. So a housing element is one chapter or one element of your general plan. Every city and county in California, including the city of Westminster, is required to have a general plan and is required that one of those elements be the housing element. The housing element lays out the city's policies, programs and goals related specifically to housing, and it must be updated every eight years. We call that eight-year period the planning period. So we are in the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine planning period. It is also sometimes referred to as the sixth cycle, meaning that there have been six cycles of updates to housing elements throughout the state of California. So a key component of a housing element is describing the city's plan to meet its fair share of regional housing needs that are determined by the state of California. This starts at the top. The state of California has determined that there is a housing crisis across the state and has identified the need to accommodate three point four million new units over the planning period across the entire state of California. The state then allocates a portion of that statewide growth to regional areas. And here in Southern California, that's the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. SCAG receives its allocation and for this planning period, it was one point three million units. And it uses a methodology that is approved by the state of California to allocate its regional share to each member agency, including the city of Westminster. In this cycle, SCAG used a methodology that looks at socioeconomic information like population trends, household income and home prices and commute patterns. And it also looks at regional connections via things like highways, major corridors or buses. And the result of this allocation was a much larger allocation of new, um, units to be accommodated within Westminster than has been seen in prior cycles. So we call the regional share of the, the, the local agencies' regional share, your regional housing needs allocation or your RINA. And it is the city's job to demonstrate that there is enough land available at appropriate land use designations and zones to accommodate your RINA. The city of Westminster itself does not build housing and is not responsible for building housing, and we're gonna spend some time talking about that later. But your RINA is broken down also into income levels based on the area median income. So it understands that different household incomes need access to different types of home choices, and your RINA reflects that through the household income allocation. Westminster's state mandated final RINA for this planning period is nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine units. This is a unit increase of twenty-two units over some prior presentations. This is a result of a final updated methodology provided from SCAG that the city received confirmation of in mid-November of last year. Thirty percent of those units are dedicated to households earning very low or low income, uh, incomes. So this brings us to the actual presentation of the housing element itself. It's essentially broken into two primary parts. The first is the housing plan. That's the first fifty pages or so of the document. The describes the goals, policies, programs and quantified objectives to meet the city's housing needs. Part two is the background report. That's the next hundred and fifty or two hundred pages or so. That talks about the city's progress towards meeting its fifth cycle programs, an assessment of housing needs, an overview of constraints to development, a discussion of available resources and an assessment of fair housing issues. Three appendices are also provided. The first is a inventory of available sites to accommodate the RINA, also providing additional supporting evidence of current uses at those sites as well as market trends. Appendix B is a summary of the public outreach, uh, conducted as well as a summary of the public comments received on the draft housing element. And then appendix C has been added to further define residential construction cost estimates in accordance with state law. The housing plan includes five program, five goals that set forward the aspirations for future housing development in Westminster. These generally revolve around allowing for a diversity of housing options, assisting in the development of new housing construction that serves the needs of lower income, special needs and, uh, market rate or, uh, above moderate income households. Removing or reducing constraints to housing, conserving and improving the city's exist, existing housing stock and promoting equal housing opportunities. The housing plan also includes thirty-three individual programs that help implement the city's housing goals and policies. Twenty of these programs are included in your current element. They're working well, so the city will continue doing them. Thirteen programs have been added to the housing plan to largely reflect new state requirements as it relates to housing law as well as community priorities for addressing current and future housing needs. I wanted to bring up the new programs that have been added to the housing plan to be clear about those that the city would be, uh, implementing over the next eight years. The first is a program related to monitoring sites to ensure the city's compliance with no net loss, which is a state mandate. Program three is the, uh, implementation of development standards for the city's mixed-use land use designations. Program four discusses opportunities at Westminster Mall. Program five looks at the accessory dwelling unit production. Program seven discusses replacement of affordable units, again, in accordance with state law. Program eight describes how the city would process sites that were identified on prior inventories, also a requirement of state law. Thirteen looks at California accessibility standards compliance with state law. Sixteen is the mitigation of non-government constraints. Eighteen looks at the city's neighborhood pride multifamily rental rehabilitation program. Nineteen looks at the tenant-based rental assistance program. Program twenty-one is the community preservation unit. Thirty-two discusses affirmatively furthering fair housing and program thirty-three researches economic displacement risk. All right. So that brings us to how the city is planning to accommodate its RINA of just short of ten thousand units. The first is looking at progress towards the city's RINA. Those are projects that have been constructed or under construction since July first of twenty twenty-one, as well as projects that are approved and entitled but haven't yet started construction. We call those types of projects credits. Then we need to account for accommodating the remaining RINA. We're looking at projects that are proposed but not yet approved, accessory dwelling unit or junior access, accessory dwelling unit production, and then underutilized sites. Westminster, like so many of your neighbors, doesn't have a whole lot of vacant land available to develop new housing. So we are looking at sites that are underutilized, both sites that are smaller than half an acre as well as sites that are larger than half an acre, uh, both in residential areas and then sites in mixed-use areas that are larger than half an acre. On the screen is an exhibit which demonstrates the capacity available at each of these strategies. This is of course included in the housing element for further review and consideration. You can see that after deducting the credits of five hundred and ninety-six units, the city is left with a remaining RINA of nine thousand one hundred and sixty-three units, which is accommodated through the variety of strategies described previously, resulting in a surplus of available sites at all income levels. On the map is a, on the screen is a map showing the location of those sites. The housing element also includes an assessment of fair housing. This is a new requirement of state law. This is a chapter of the background report where we can look at indicators relating to diversity, persons with disabilities, female-headed households, trends based on household income, racial or ethnic compositions and opportunity indices. This is an exhibit of a map included in the fair housing section, which describes the location of the sites to accommodate the RINA. Again, some of these indicators. which describes the location of the sites to accommodate the RINA, against some of these indicators and trends. So this brings us to the role of the state's Department of Housing and Community Development in reviewing and ultimately certifying the city's housing element. The state, eh, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, is required to review and provide findings on a draft housing element that the city must consider and respond to prior to adoption. The city submitted its draft housing element for state review. It took 60 days to receive their letter, at which time we have reviewed and considered their comments and made modifications in red-line track changes to the draft housing element to respond to their findings. Their findings generally revolve around four categories. The fair housing analysis, sites inventory, constraints to housing, and the implementation of the housing programs. Specifically in the fair housing section, we have updated the section to add more information about enforcement and outreach activities, provided a more comprehensive local and regional analysis of the indicators required, and provided a local and regional analysis of access to opportunities, and broken that down to look at access to opportunities for education, economy, transportation, and environmental factors. The section also included an expanded analysis of factors related to disproportionate housing needs, such as cost burden, displacement, or overcrowding, and further connected the available sites to demonstrate the, the city's program to accommodate its RINA is in, consistent with a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing, and we have updated the associated housing programs in the housing plan. Related to the sites inventory, additional information was added to demonstrate realistic capacity for the sites, including a site-by-site analysis determining the suitability of identified sites with existing uses. We added additional analysis to Westminster, the proposed project at Westminster Mall to demonstrate its adequacy in accommodating a, a, a large portion of the city's development potential, and added a new program, Program Four, to, uh, further describe the role of Westminster Mall in accommodating a portion of the city's RINA, added clarifying information for zoning or new programs to address state requirements for a variety of housing types, provided more evidence for the assumptions regarding ADU product, projections for the, uh, for the years, and demonstrated the availability of infrastructure for the sites identified. The analysis of constraints expanded the discussion of government constraints, including land use controls, fees, and processing and permitting procedures. Also, an expanded analysis of non-government constraints, including the, uh, new Appendix C to discuss residential development costs. We also expanded the strategy to retain affordable units that are at risk of expiring to expand beyond the planning period and look at a 10-year, uh, calendar, 10-year period. And then finally, modifications were made to the housing programs to clarify timelines, objectives, and the city's role in implementation. Specifically, the program, Program Three was updated to commit to rezoning all necessary parcels in the site's inventory to create that consistency with the city's general plan land use map. The city's rezoning process is already underway to create that consistency. Program Four was added to address the development potential at Westminster Mall. Program Eight was added to, uh, identify adequate sites for lower-income households on previously identified sites. This is a state requirement. Sixteen was added to mitigate potential non-government constraints. And I'm almost done. This brings us to those topics that were not able to fit nicely in one of those boxes. Some of the other topics we needed to address was a more thorough, uh, demonstration of the city's commitment to trilingual public participation throughout the planning process, as well as a review of the city's cumulative efforts to address the needs of special needs populations. So in terms of environmental review and compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act Guideline Section 15164, the city has prepared an addendum to the general plan final EIR. And the conclusion of this addendum is that the proposed updates to the housing element do not result in any new or greater environmental impacts that were previously analyzed or disclosed as part of the prior general plan EIR. And the housing element is not update, not requiring or proposing the rezoning of any parcels in the city inconsistent with those previously reviewed as part of that general plan. None of the conditions in the SECA guidelines section are present to require the preparation of a subsequent EIR, and no additional environmental review is required. It is, uh, staff's recommendation, uh, to move forward with the, the resolution included in your staff report as an attachment. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and close my presentation and, uh, allow discussion or questions for myself or for staff.
Yeah, I really thank you, and I appreciate for your really detailed presentation. I think that really helped all of us understand what is the, the current status of our housing element in the city. I remember that, uh, based on RINA assessment, uh, several years ago, uh, our city, we, uh, our city staff and members, they go, so every time we look at a number that required by RINA, we can't really have a concern, and we don't really know that, you know, whether or not that our city, we go to meet a requirement because based on the number that RINA required that our city, we have to meet, you know, we have to come up with 9,759. Unit is anywhere that you go back to the, like, the slide that, you know, what is a current a number of unit that we are having right now. Uh, so, you know, we carry up, you know, uh, give us a hope that at any day that we go to meet like the requirement, and so how many more years that we, uh, that we still have?
Yes, so, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, are you referring to this, to this presentation? Yes, very good. I'll go ahead and enlarge that.
All of us, uh, all the number, yes, please.
Very good, thank you. So, uh, the top row is describing the city's state mandated RINA by those predetermined income levels, totaling, as you mentioned, 9,759 units. It is the city's responsibility to demonstrate that there is land available for the private market to develop affordable or market rate units if they want to, to develop the number of units you've been assigned as your RINA. The city of Westminster is not required to build these units. It is not penalized if these units are not built. It is the city's responsibility that your land use plan and your zoning plan and things like your specific plans set the stage for the private market to develop these units if they want to. So looking at opportunities to accommodate the RINA and demonstrate to the state that you are meeting that obligation. We are looking at credits. These are projects that have been, uh, again, under construction or approved and are can, starting construction since July 1st of 2021. That only represents 596 potential credited units. So the city is responsible for accommodating, uh, most of its RINA, 9,163 units. Um, half of those units are above moderate income. Those are units that serve market rate, um, market rate housing that are largely developed through just market rate development. Uh, but the remainder are those dedicated to low, very low or moderate income households. Looking specifically at opportunities for proposed projects, the vast majority of this opportunity identified to have a potential capacity of 2,639 units is potential development at Westminster Mall. Again, we're just looking at potential development over the planning period that could be accommodated based on zoning and land use, uh, standards. We also identified projections, uh, largely consistent with state law, but also reflective of local conditions that projected the development of up to 528 accessory or junior accessory dwelling units over the eight-year planning period. We also looked at sites that are designated for residential uses that are underutilized, meaning that the existing land use and zoning would allow many more units than are currently developed at the site. This is a result of many, um, efforts over the past 20 or 30 years to, uh, create new development opportunities to revitalize some of the city's residential areas. So again, no land use changes proposed, uh, in any of these strategies. Looking at sites designated as mixed use in the general plan, we have two different ways of thinking about that, really based on size. As we've discussed previously, the state has said that sites that are less than half an acre in size, which Westminster has a lot of sites that are less than half an acre in size, are not suitable to accommodate a portion of the city's lower-income RINA. So you can see here that we've broken out sites that are less than half an acre as being able to accommodate your moderate and above moderate income units, while sites that are more than half an acre would accommodate the vast majority of your lower-income units, as well as some moderate and above moderate. So those are those locations of how those strategies all add up together, resulting again in a surplus of available sites, uh, for all, all income levels. So again, this is without any, um, rezoning that's inconsistent with the general plan. The city has already implemented a process to create that consistency with the general plan mixed-use designations, and this is using those designations as the, uh, development capacity for these sites. Did I answer your question on this slide?
Yes, I think you already answered, you know, uh, more than half of my question. Is, uh, is there a word that you can explain to us that the the lie, like after Reddit, this mean that these units are in the process? Am I right? Am I correct? Nine, nine thousand, one and six, three, you know, is, is that like all the, you know, all the number that mean that all the, uh, all the development in, uh, in process? Am I correct?
That is the, uh, that is the capacity that your land uses. The, the work you did on your general plan update to create these new mixed-use areas, this is the capacity that that created. So as projects are proposed in the future, those undergo the development review process. They are still brought forward to council. They are still considered through California Environmental Quality Act. This is just setting the stage and saying, there's enough sites available to accommodate that 9,163 units.
So and how many more years that we, uh, that we still have, you know, to meet, uh, the requirement from RINA?
So this, this is for the next eight years. Um, eight years from now, it'll start fresh. You'll receive a new allocation. And again, the city's job is to make sure that the land is available, not necessarily that the units are produced. You need to set the stage and be good partners, but eight years, you'll, you'll have a whole new allocation, and you'll be doing this all over again.
Wow. So that's the, uh, one of the challenge, I think, yeah.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Please.
On this table? So give me an example of, uh, the underutilized residential site.
So these are sites designated as, you know, R3 or R4 zones that are, you know, maybe half an acre or a third of an acre that could accommodate up to 10 units at the site, but there's only one single house developed there. So the city has seen past applications where new units have been developed at these residential sites, consistent with the existing zoning. So this is already allowed. It's not a special request. It's not a zone change. It's not a land use change. Just for whatever reason, over the history of the development of that site, it wasn't developed to its capacity. It was actually significantly underdeveloped, maybe just one unit when there could have been 10 units. So in those cases, we've identified the, uh, potential capacity, again, consistent with your current zoning and general plan, like, land uses, that there could be additional units on that site if the property owner wished to pursue that opportunity.
Um, okay, along that same line, I have another question, and that would be for the mixed use, like underutilized mixed use sites, and I understand about that. Uh, like, for instance, uh, in, in my situation, um, well, you know, same thing happened, and the zoning's, the zoning's changed and, um, and, um, but will, will you be passively or actively going after informing the landowners? Because a lot of landowners, they don't know, and they don't keep up with, um, the zoning. So I think it makes sense for you to go after, uh, any zonal changes, uh, that, um, you know, that you've made in the last, you know, general plan. And, uh, any updates and things like that? Would you be informing the, the owners, and should I be asking the staff? You know, otherwise, how would, how would they know unless they're looking to build? Like, I didn't know until I was thinking about building on, you know, on my land, or, you know what I mean? So rather than possibly sitting there, we could approach them and say, and ask them to build out and inform them that the zones change.
Yes, I, I, I agree, and as part of the general plan update, there was significant outreach to property owners, but that was a few years ago. So it's important to reconnect with the community and your property owners and your business owners and tenants. The housing plan does include proactive outreach from the city to property owners to advertise the information consistent with the general plan and your zoning update. Again, as you complete that zoning consistency and create those new mixed-use zones, that also includes an outreach program to property owners and, uh, developers and the community. So that communication will continue to be ongoing during the planning period, absolutely.
Yeah, I highly recommend that if we want to build and reach our homeowners. Thank you. It's awesome.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question on probably the same table here, under the, underutilized residential sites. I mean, like you explained that, that there's a site that can handle 10 units, but the, the owner is just wanting to build one. What is the city's role or efforts to inform or to persuade that property owner that is this area, this site, it's, it's, it can handle 10, and we're, we need the more units in the city? Can, will the city informant or try to sway that property owner to take full advantage of the amount of units that can be built on that site? I don't know if that's a Steve question or...
I, I think what I would say is, this is Christian. This is, you have an obligation not to build them, but basically to look at the general plan designation and the zoning and to create the opportunity.
Yeah.
It is then incumbent on the property owner to decide to take advantage of that opportunity. Now, we could provide special notice to them. There's going to be notice whether part, as part of this, or at some point, we're going to have to rezone properties in order to be consistent with the general plan that we're, that we're putting together for the housing element. They have to be consistent. So there's probably some notice there, but, I mean, certainly we could inform people, but ultimately, if a person owns a property, we can't force the issue. You can just maybe encourage it. But we do that by designating certain areas of the city for higher density. And that actually adds value to the property owner because they then could get more money by selling it to a developer or developing it themselves um, with higher density housing. And so we're encouraging them by changing the zoning and general plan designation for certain areas of the cities, um, such as, let's say, the mall or maybe along Westminster Boulevard, or, or certain areas that we've designated for higher density. But it's incumbent upon the property owner at some point to decide pop with the developer or decide to develop it them, themselves.
All right, thank you. I also had a question on the, on the ADUs as far as the, the letter from the HCD. Uh, uh, as far as, uh, on the paragraph under ADUs, it talks about, uh, monitoring the affordability of ADUs. Um, how, how does that work? It just talks about, you know, you know, monitoring like in a timely manner, you know, six months. Uh, and, and how would that work? How would we go about doing that? Um, there's a whole gist about, you know, this, this housing element is to provide affordable housing, a certain amount of affordable housing. And the ADUs are on this section, on the, they're talking about being able to, to have enough ADUs that can be affordable to the community. And how, how will we monitor and enforce, you know, uh, where he's talking about trends? Yeah, how, how would we go about that, monitoring the affordability?
Uh, Steve, would you like to take the answer to that one?
Yeah, I, I thank you, Amanda, and Councilmember Mondo. I think what, what the answer to the question is what we currently do. And, and unfortunately, this is the only thing we could do at the moment, is on our application form for an ADU, we do ask that they provide the rent information, the intended rent information for the ADU unit. There's still a lot to be worked out at the state.
There's still a lot to be worked out at the state level about crediting ADUs and exactly where do you draw the line between affordability or not with ADUs. But right now, what we're doing is we're gathering and every single ADU application that comes into the city, we're asking the applicant, please provide us what your intended rent is. We collect that and then we provide that along with our housing division to get a general sense of is this ADU going to be something that's market rate? Or perhaps rented at a more affordable rate? And then at some point, if the state gives us the go ahead and says, okay, that's enough, then we can credit it towards a towards some type of affordable housing. Or other other things that we need to do. Unfortunately, we we don't have the staffing ability to go out and monitor, you know, every single housing unit, especially with ADUs and and try to determine on a month-to-month basis or an annual basis, you know, are you still renting at this level? But but that's the sort of action it might take in the long run if that's what we were required to do. But for the moment, we're just simply gathering the information at the application time.
Okay, thank you. Another question. When, you know, you go, we receive the letters, not just from HCD, but also I think you got from the Kennedy Commission and Airport Land Use Commission. On Airport Land Use Commission, where it talks about community needs. And as far as the the, you know, how, I think we're kind of short on on the, again, with the affordability, I think we're, you know, we're down, the Westminster should take into account the local economy and offer, you know, what areas do we have, areas that are just focused on being affordable housing? How are we doing that?
No, Amanda, I don't know if you want to answer or add to that, but I I would I would go back to what Amanda said earlier is that the in the housing element, there's a land use map that shows the underutilized parcels and and those parcels that are over a half acre. There are some in the cities are sort of scattered throughout. But those are the parcels that, at least in the view of HCD, would be more likely where we'd be able to produce the affordable units. A good example might be the Westminster Crossings Project, which I, if I recall, is approximately two acres in size. And as we know, that's a hundred percent affordable. So it's it's those kind of sites that are half acre, acre that are probably designated for mixed use or already for residential use or they're scattered to opposite. Those would be the places most likely where, you know, at least according to, you know, and 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 adherence with the HCD's methodology, where we would most likely see affordable housing occur.
Thank you.
I have, are you done? If you're done, I have questions. I have a question. Can you go back to the 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 table that we were talking about, the numbers?
Sure.
With the number, with the number that Rena requires to have nine nine thousand seven fifty-nine unit built in the period of nine, I mean, eight years. We just had SB nine, which, you know, taken to affect this year. I mean, just this month. Well, how much the do you think is going to help us to achieve the number? And do you think that is a, is it an advantage for us?
Yes, Councilmember Nwane, what I would say is that at the time that the state and and the time that SCAG developed the methodology and and determined the arena allocation, SB nine was was likely still in in the Senate or the Assembly Committee. So it wasn't, it wasn't factored in. So the arena that you see tonight doesn't assume any SB nine units. But the good news is because, yeah, obviously, we know the state adopted, the governor signed SB nine, and it's now in effect. We can look at SB nine units as a bonus. So we don't know exactly how many we would produce, but we do know that because this is a new incentive that's provided for additional housing, we can assume that some property owners will take advantage of it. And and we have to remember that SB nine is only applies to the single-family zones. Whereas all the underutilized sites that you see in the housing element are multifamily zones or mixed use zones. So the SB nine units that would occur in single-family zones would be in addition to the units that we assume in the slide that's before us tonight.
And for the underutilized residence of site, as you mentioned earlier, that, you know, sometimes that you have ten thousand square feet lot, but there's only one property on that. And it's also up to the property owner whether they want to define or they want to build more unit on on that. We don't have any any say into that, right?
That is correct. We can't force a property owner to choose to to develop. But but as as was said earlier, we need to set the stage to allow them to do it based on the general plan and zoning.
All right, thank you. Yes, I have a question on the last slide of this table or the or the surplus number. So that's actually not a real number, right? That's the number that we expect that after we meet all the all the unit required by Rena. Am I am I correct? So that is a number that we expect, but that's not a real number because if we haven't meet, you know, those number that we plan to do, then that would be not a surplus any end. Am I am I correct?
Do you want to take that, Amanda?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. The surplus is basically saying of those, so let me move to the next slide. Of those sites identified as appropriate to accommodate your arena with your general plan and zoning designations. I calc, we can calculate out the total capacity of each of those sites and look at it against your arena. And we can say that those sites we showed on the map accommodate a little bit more than your arena at the different income levels. So we call that a surplus. So not only have we identified enough sites through credits and inventory to accommodate your lower income arena of three thousand three hundred and fifty-four units, we've actually identified an extra, an extra site or two to accommodate sixty-five more units than that. This is really important because one new requirement of state law is that the city must maintain enough land available over the entire eight years. So a project may come in three or four years from now, and it's not exactly what we expected in the housing element. That's to be expected. Things might be a little different in the future. By having a little bit of surplus here, it allows for some flexibility in reviewing future project applications. So the state does recommend that we include a small surplus of sites in your inventory so that you have that flexibility to respond over the planning period. So it's actually saying you've got just a few more sites than you absolutely need, but that's a good thing because it gives you that room to move.
And Amanda, if I could just add to that, I I would say that the wisdom of the mayor and council in adopting the two thousand and sixteen general plan provided really the bulk of this surplus capability, this capacity, simply because by adopting the mixed use districts and the and the densities provided in the general plan, as as Amanda has demonstrated, we're in good shape to meet the arena and then some. So we 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 are very fortunate. Some cities, unfortunately, are in a situation where in order to meet their arena, they need to go out and find parcels to completely redesignate for residential use. So we're we're very fortunate in that regard.
So based on what you tried to explain, that you are confident that we go to meet the number required by Rena at the end, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good. That's really good to hear because I remember like several years ago when myself and the pastor council member, when we looked at a number, we kind of really have concerns. And I believe that all other city surrounding us really have a concern because, you know, in the past, you know, I was on SCAG. So I mean, like a lot of city in this county, we raised the same concerns. And we don't really know that how how the city, we could able to meet the number required by Rena at the end. But I really appreciate your presentation and your answer. I think that that helped of us to have a clear picture. So we we understand our current element, housing element status. We'd appreciate that.
And Mayor, we need to receive public comment.
Okay, you're correct. Okay, so now I'd like to invite like
May I have a question before we go to public comment or we have to go back? Oh, thank you very much, Amanda, for the report, but I might I might mistaken if we already have this presentation a few months ago, is that correct?
You had the the first part of it, a description of the of the draft, generally speaking, and the approach. And then tonight was really able to be expanded to describe the changes made to the public draft as a result of the comments from the state. So that that was the new information tonight. Some of it was priorly presented and and some of it was new.
The the table that we have seen, the last one, have it's changed since the last presentation at all? Or does the number stay pretty much the same thing? Is any way you can recollect or?
It changed in a very minor way. In mid-November of last year, we received additional guidance from the state regarding a small discrepancy in the overall arena of twenty-two units. It's less than half of a percent of the city's overall arena. So that top line changed a little bit. And then as a result of just getting the inventory into the state's required Excel format, a few numbers here and there were tweaked. But this is largely reflective of the presentation, strategy and unit allocations by income level by strategy you've seen before.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to confirm one question from Mr. Planning Manager, Steve Redgate. You mentioned earlier that the when when we accept the ADU application, you we collect the information of the estimating rent for the particular unit. Those are estimate and we use that information to report to the state and 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 to determine the affordability of our housing, is that correct?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Adele. At the moment, we we don't have a way to report to the state. So we're just collecting that information for our own internal purposes. But the hope is that at some point, the state will determine exactly what is the cutoff point and how exactly cities can make that determination. But in the meantime, we figure there's really no harm in asking the question of our applicants. And if the state says, for example, next year, well, you know, you need to have the property owner verify the rent then, and then that's the only way you can get credit, then we'll have to institute some other form of that type of form of implementation to get that information from property owners. But all we have at the moment is just gathering it for our own internal purposes.
So we basically is ahead of the game. We can collect the anticipated data when we, that the state might require. How long have we been doing that? Since the ADU program started a couple of years ago or just recently?
It's really, yes, it's a relatively recent thing. We completely overhauled our ADU application process. I want to say last May, we rolled it out right around the end of June. So it's it's been in, we've been using it for just a little over half a year now.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If I may add to that, to shed some light on the issue for Councilmember Tygo. I I was with staff, you know, working on that overhaul. And I was very glad to be involved. Basically, back when we started with the ADUs, we really didn't have any. We we, I I think those ADUs did not count or towards the arena numbers. And today, I'm very happy to hear that that was one of my questions when I dialed into you yesterday and and I wanted to confirm that the ADU numbers are are being counted and I'm very happy to to see that. And I think we we were very speculative last year. And, you know, thinking that where are arena numbers? How are we going to be building all those units? And so I figured, and then when I thought to myself, that would be great if, you know, those ADUs could be counted towards. And so, you know, I think it was just staff were also very you know, just speculative that, you know, and hoping one day it would be counted. And so that's when we decided to put it on the application. And so I'm glad you really did that. The one thing that I I'm bringing this up because we we did it for thinking that maybe in the future, we could make use of of those numbers. And so I think a lot of applicants, they don't know why you're asking for 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 the rent. And, you know, so they're probably jotting down whatever, you know. So I I I can just imagine they're probably thinking, should I put a low number or should I put a high number? And they have no idea. So I think being that we only started collecting, probably you rolled out in May, so it's ever since May. I would say this, you probably don't have a whole lot, but I mean, because we are, we're 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 counting every number, every every unit, being the arena number we got is is huge. And so I think it might, it behooves us to, you know, go back once we get the number from 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 HCD and go back and you give them a call, but don't don't sound so threatening. Don't make them sound like you're policing or whatever. They could, you could scare them away. But I think you will find that those those numbers will be very useful because you've collected the data and you had some foresight in doing so. And I think, you know, it's going to be very beneficial to us if we could go back and revisit and and get those numbers and and get them, you know, accurately so that we could, you know, get some credit for the ADUs.
Oh, thank you very much. Interesting point that you brought up that the the truthfulness about the data to collect the accurate data. Steve, is any way, have we done anything to ensure the application, that the applicant to provide accurate data for us so they understand that we're not going to use it against them? So that we can at least capture the correct data instead of fake news and information?
Yes, and unfortunately, we, you know, we we certainly can't. We we don't, we don't have the ability to often double check things. But there is a portion of the application form where the where the applicant and the property owner are signing essentially an affidavit stating that all this information is correct and that it's determined later to be wrong. That, you know, it could imperil the approval of their project. And that's just really to protect the city. So that, for example, if they show the wrong setback or they didn't disclose that there was an easement. And you can extend that to say that you're being truthful about the rent. Now, when somebody files an application with the city, any application for any type of entitlement is technically a public record. And most of that information, except for some very special information like plans that are drawn by an architect, is public information and the public has a right to view those records. So some of that information they provided is, you know, somebody could come to the counter or they could do a public record request, which happens sometimes, and they can find out who the applicant is. do a public records request, which happens sometimes, and they can find out who the applicant is. But certain information like telephone numbers and things like that are often redacted. It it's a little bit of a complicated situation, but the bottom line is we we do try to do our best to make sure that our applicants are being truthful and honest in the representation of their proposals.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You know, you know, here's another thing is, just remember that, mind you, that on the application, at the very, very beginning of the whole process, they have no idea what they're going to rent be renting for. So it's really a bad guess. And I can tell you that rent has come down. And because, you know, supply and demand. So I think it 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 would make sense for us to somehow catch them at the very end. And and like if they're going to have, and do they have a rental? Do they all get this license or anything like that, that, you know, that could be asked at that time? Like after they rented out, like maybe after the first year? Because those updates are really important. And I can tell you, those numbers are going down, the rent, it is. And and at the very beginning, when you apply, you probably put some random number and you know, I mean, if I were them, if I were, you know, a builder for an applicant, I'd probably be going, I don't know, you know, okay, maybe I'm going to hope to get twenty-nine hundred. But I'm not going to get twenty-nine hundred. Realistically, it's going to be much lower. And so, but then that's like when they apply, that's that you're talking about, it takes about nine months or a year to complete. Sometimes longer. So I don't know what that real number is, but it would, you know, you you probably want to just think outside the box and figure out like where are you going to catch them at the other end to get that a little more realistic number. The real number, that's going to help you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do think we need to do the public openness for public comment.
All right. So now is a time for a public comment. Thank you for reminding.
So I did receive one e-comment. So at this time, I will I will be reading the e-comment followed by anyone wishing to speak. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand, if I could have the interpreter interpret that, please.
Thank you.
Okay, so the e-comment received was from Mitchell Si. He's an attorney for Southwest Regional Council of carpenters. And he raised concerns regarding the EIR submitted prior to certification of the EIR for the project. Requested the city provide notice for any and all notices referring or related to the project issued under CEQA. And listed several requirements the city should have. So now that was the end of the e-commerce and I'll be calling our first speaker. Terry Reins.
Good evening. I urge the entire city council to actually read and study the entire housing element being submitted to really get to know the demographics and housing challenges in our city. There are, these are the things this council should be focused on, not personal vendettas and political agendas. I concur with many of the points and recommendations made in the Kennedy Commission letter and the findings from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Both provide solid recommendations on how this housing element should fully comply with state law and further affordable housing development in Westminster, but the city is ignoring a lot of it. I made similar points in my own comments, both written and oral, but only the three more professional written public comment letters were included in Attachment Five. Not exactly the best demonstration of fostering public participation and comments for this housing element update. As a result, I have to wonder if my comments were actually heard by staff or the consultant, probably not, since it took me multiple calls, emails, public comments over several months, just to get them to use the correct RENA number, which they did not fix until eight or nine months after the final allocation of nine thousand seven hundred fifty-nine units was assigned. FYI, pages seventy-six, seventy-eight and eighty of the background report have the sides cut off and page one oh eight has a weird spacing issue. The maps provided to visually analyze patterns of integration and segregation based on racial and ethnic factors, disability, female-headed households, seniors and median household income do not even include the major street names, making visual analysis of integration and segregation patterns within our city virtually impossible. The city only permitted one hundred and eighteen units for very low and low income households during the prior eight-year cycle. In two thousand twenty, all of the building permits, sixty-three and entitlements, one hundred issued were for above moderate income households, none for affordable units. Between June and September two thousand twenty-one, five hundred ninety-six units were constructed under construction or entitled and five hundred and thirty-two of those or eighty-nine percent were above moderate income units. Ninety percent of the units planned at the Westminster Mall site are designated as above moderate income versus a more compliant rate of about thirty percent for other sites. This appears to violate the furthering fair housing requirements of AB six eighty-six. This is an extremely troubling pattern and unacceptable. In Westminster, there are only six hundred and eleven rent restricted units representing just two percent of the city's housing stock, also unacceptable. Extremely low income households earn less than thirty percent of the county's area median income. Depending on the household size, those households can afford monthly housing costs of between six hundred fifty-three dollars and one thousand one hundred and two dollars per month and homes priced at ninety-five thousand seven hundred to one hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred. Nothing's available for them. Forty-nine percent of houses for sale in Westminster in February two thousand twenty-one were priced at over seven hundred thousand dollars. Between two thousand eleven and two thousand twenty-one, median home sale prices in Westminster increased eighty-four point three percent, even higher than the countywide increase of eighty-one point five percent. Just to be clear, mobile homes are not an affordable housing purchase option for Westminster residents due to the exorbitant space rent prices. So that verbage should be removed from this plan. Westminster's median household income is twenty-eight percent lower than the county's twenty-six point one percent. One quarter of all households in Westminster fall into the extremely low income designation. Seventy-four point four percent of extremely low income households pay more than thirty percent of their income for housing and sixty-one point eight percent pay more than fifty percent of their income for housing and are severely cost burden. Also unacceptable. The city has zero housing units where the rental rate is set based on a fixed percentage of the tenant's income, also unacceptable. For extremely low income residents, this is the only real affordable housing option. Recent developments in Westminster for extremely low income households are only units allocated strictly to those experiencing homelessness, completely ignoring the larger segment of the population in the extremely low income category, including many of our seniors that are not yet homeless but will be soon unless truly affordable housing is made available to them. The city must provide for affordable housing development for this ever-growing vulnerable segment of our population. The city needs but refuses to adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance that would set a fifteen to twenty percent requirement of all new residential developments in the city be designated as extremely low, very low and low income units with special emphasis on extremely low income units, not just for those experiencing homelessness. This is a serious void in the city's housing efforts to date and it must be fixed. I would also like to see the city through partnerships with other agencies, developers and/or larger nonprofit organizations provide rental housing stock where rental rates are set based on a fixed percentage of the tenant's income. Again, the only truly affordable housing option for extremely low income households. Thank you for the opportunity to once again provide my comments on the Westminster's draft two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-nine housing element.
Okay, our next speaker is Ido.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ido Brunchig. I am a skilled professional union carpenter and I reside in the city of Westminster. One of the things I noticed in the housing element when Amanda was giving the presentation was there was no language implemented on local hire, skilled and trained, certified or apprenticeship. And one of the things that will fix many of the issues that were discussed previously in the meeting about homelessness and you know, income and wages and how to help your citizens is providing work in their city at a good sustainable wage, a living wage. And one of the things you could easily do to increase your citizens AMI is to make sure that these private developers, when they come into your city and want to develop on this designated land and parcel that you have is to make sure that they are using local hire. They're not bringing in companies from out of state and they're not cheating their workforce, they're not abiding by California law, Wage Order sixteen. And you're helping your citizens and putting back into your your own economy, helping the community. They pay your taxes, you know, and the more that they're able to work, the better off the city is. So I would hope that the city and the council would take some time to look at adding in some local hire requirements, skilled and trained workforce, just some language that holds these developers accountable to help your residents that work on this type of work to be able to live in your city and work in your city. And other than that, thank you for your time as always. And I hope to see this get set forth.
Okay, our next speaker is Tam Tran. Tam? If anybody else would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand. I have no additional speakers.
All right, so I don't see any hand raised. So with that, I like to close public comment and easy now for the council action.
Move to proof.
Second. I have a quick question before that. It's that Amanda, did you address some of the the concerns from like the Kennedy Commission and HC, I mean, were all the all the issues, there's a few letters here that each submitted with concerns, were they each of those concerns addressed?
So I'll answer the question regarding HCD's finding letter. Yes, staff and the consultant team have worked diligently to address every finding that HCD provided and requested a modification to your draft housing element. Those are the redline changes presented in the draft available for your review. So we have worked extremely, extremely hard to address every state finding to demonstrate compliance with state housing law. Additionally, the responses to the public comments received in writing on the draft housing element are included and responded to as part of Appendix B. So I would refer you there to see those specific requests from each individual commenter and the response as appropriate in the housing element.
And what about some of the issues, the concerns that some of the speakers tonight? Do you have any comments regarding some of the issues they raised?
I would just like to clarify, in a written comment, there was a reference to an EIR prepared for this project. Again, no, no environmental impact report was prepared for this project. This is an addendum to a final environmental impact report that is was previously certified for the general plan EIR. So there is no separate environmental impact report prepared to support adoption of the housing element. An addendum is the appropriate vehicle for that CEQA review. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if we don't have any other concerns or question from members of the council, so we have motion and second on the floor.
So that motion was made by Councilmember Doe and second by Mayor Tom. And that was to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster to amend the Westminster general plan by adopting the housing element update and adopting an addendum to the Westminster general plan by non-environmental impact report case number two thousand twenty-one dash zero two two nine. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? You're muted.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Ed Mayor Tom?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, the next public hearing item, four point two, case number two thousand twenty, that's one, one, two, seven, public hearing and request for a general plan amendment. Zoning map amendment, conditional use permit and development review to develop and operate residential care facility on the on the vacant lot located at A two five one High Avenue. So may I have a staff report?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. For this public hearing, Christopher Wong, our senior planner and the project manager for this project, will be providing the staff presentation. Chris?
Give me one moment while I share my screen. Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Ta and members of the council. This is a public hearing for case, planning case two thousand twenty dash eleven twenty-seven, a project at eighty-two fifty-one Hyall Avenue. In my presentation, I will first identify the location of the project site, then describe the proposed project, identify the proposed entitlements and actions by the council, discuss the project background, and then finally the planning conditions recommendation. Starting with the product location, the project site is located on the northeast corner of Beach Boulevard and Hyall Avenue, but within property owned by the Ocean View School District and occupied by Westmont Elementary School. The project site is located on a vacant portion of the district-owned property, as can be seen from the aerial view. The property will remain under district ownership and the applicant has secured a long-term lease from the school district. To the north is the Pavilion Shopping Center. To the northeast and east are single-family residences. To the south across Hyall Avenue and west across Beach Boulevard are properties in the city of Huntington Beach. The properties along Beach Boulevard are occupied by commercial land uses and the properties to the south are developed with single-family residences. The city's general plan identifies the site as a public semi-public which allows for a range of public uses, including public schools, libraries, cemeteries and other public, similar public uses. To the north is property designated for commercial, regional commercial. And to the northeast and east is property designated for low-density residential. Zoning for the property is also public semi-public, consistent with the general plan. To the north is property in the C two district. And then to the northeast and east is property in the R one single-family residential district. So the applicant is first requesting to amend the general plan non-use designation from public semi-public to residential medium density. The applicant is also requesting to amend the zoning map from public semi-public to R three, which is a medium-density residential zoning district consistent with the requested general plan designation. The applicant is further proposing to develop and operate a residential care facility for the elderly on the property, which will be licensed by the California Department of Social Services. This facility will provide assisted living services specializing in memory care for those with dementia. The residents of the facility will not drive and do not have vehicles due to their condition. And the facility will include sixty beds and operate twenty-four hours per day. It'll be staffed by caregivers, nurses, facility management, administration, food prep, housekeeping, maintenance, and other, another staff. To accommodate the proposed care facility, the applicant is proposing to build a new twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty square foot building. That's one story in the area of the site, shaded in yellow on the screen. Two secure courtyards are located on either side of the building. Two secure courtyards are located on either side of the building for residents to recreate, which are the areas shaded in violet. The site design includes two entry drives and parking areas, as seen in gray and the shade and the shaded gray areas. A total of 25 parking spaces are proposed on site. Last areas of the site that are proposed to be landscaped are shaded in green. The site design includes approximately 26,000 square feet of landscaping, which equates to about 30% of the site. And then low fences and walls are proposed along the front of the property. So taking a look at the floor plan of the facility, the building entrance and lobby area is located in the southeast side of the building, as seen in yellow. And then the lobby leads directly into common areas for the residents, which includes dining area, great room and activity rooms. The 60 resident beds are located in the four wings of the building, which are the areas shaded in red. And then the areas shaded in blue are administrative spaces, and the areas shaded in gray are back of house. Here are some colored elevations of the building. So you can see the building includes a full-sloped roof and tiled roof, light sand plaster, stained wood accents, stone veneer, foam trim. And as you can see, the building includes a warm color palette. So here's a photograph of of the front of another facility in Laguna Hills that incorporates the same design. So you can get a feel for what the building will ultimately look like. This is operated by the same operator as well. As you can see, the building is designed to appear like a large one-story residence. And here's a photograph of the southeast side of the building. Notice the use of arch windows, window trim, window rhythm, varying materials and architectural details such as wrought iron, decorative wrought iron, that kind of add interest to the building design. And then here is a photograph of the southwest side of the structure. You can see the incorporation of those same architectural elements. Here's a photograph of what the courtyard, one of the courtyards will ultimately look like. Again, this is a photo taken from another facility with the same design and layout. And then here is another photograph of the courtyard. There's some photographs of the resident accommodations and the common areas within the floor plan. So tonight, the council is here to consider the following actions and entitlements. One, a general plan amendment to change the line use designation for the property from public semi-public to residential medium density. Two, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning for the property from public semi-public to R3. Conditionally used permits for the proposed residential care facility. Development review for development of the site and then adoption of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. The proposed subject project is subject to CEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration were prepared by the city's environmental consultant, Hodgins Associates. This means environmental impacts were identified through the analysis, but those impacts can be mitigated to a less insignificant level through mitigation measures. This document was made available for public comment from September 14th to October 4th of last year. Some of the potential impacts that the analysis identified included air quality hazard and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality noise, public services, and tribal cultural resources. So the applicant did hold a community meeting on October 6th. It was hosted and organized by the applicant. The applicant invited all owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius of the project site to the meeting. There were three residents that came to that meeting. And they had questions or concerns regarding the existing transient problems in the area, site security, traffic impacts, number of off-street parking, flood and flooding, noise, and kind of some of the concurrent interstate up 405 improvements and project construction. Following that, the planning commission meeting held a public hearing or held a meeting on October 10, 20. However, the planning commission continued the project at the applicant's request to to address a design issue. And then and then the public hearing was held on November 3rd, which the commission reviewed the project and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the project to the council. The commission did recommend one addition, one added condition that requires some additional architectural embellishment to be added to the ends of each wing of the building, as seen in the screen, subject to the review and approval of the community development department. So at the conclusion of the hearing, the planning commission did recommend that the city council adopts the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, introduce a zoning map amendment for first reading and adoption, and approve the general plan amendment, conditionally used permit and development review subject to conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. There was, as Abigail stated earlier, one late communication item from the Ocean View School District that was given to the council and posted on the West Cities website. City staff is available for questions, and the applicant and operator is also in the audience as well. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate that. Really, really helpful. So any question or concerns from members of the city council before I invite a member from the public?
I'm sorry, is this for us to ask questions?
Please, please.
A question to staff. Since we just talked about the housing element and and arena numbers, are we getting any arena numbers of these? And what are the units? Are we getting any credit towards arena numbers? That's my question.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Ho. That is a very good question. We did try to answer that question today with one of our consultants, but from what we've learned is that HCD hasn't clarified, at least as of today, whether the beds are counted the same as a unit. So we're still waiting to find out if that is the case, but certainly the housing element does address, in the text, does address the need for housing for all income and all segments of the community, including those who have developmental disabilities such as folks with dementia and memory care issues. So we are addressing a need in the community. We just don't know to the extent, the exact extent yet of how the 60-bed unit, if approved, would get credit towards the arena that the city has to meet. However, we will certainly follow up and hopefully HCD will confirm that number at some point for us.
My next comment is that this is a beautiful layout, and it's just a beautiful building. Did you, over the years, did you have any requests for the use of this space? Triangle of shape, and imagine it's probably hard to be interested in getting in such a odd shape. Do you, have you had any proposals in the past?
Yes, so many years ago, and the and the school district may be able to elaborate on this at some point, representatives from the school district. But I do recall that many years ago, there was a proposal to develop a perhaps a car lot there. That was maybe 20 years or more ago. And and there is, there is a law, there is a state law that says that as long as a school district is using a school property for school purposes, the local government, in this case Westminster's zoning and general plan doesn't apply. However, in 2020, the school district did notify the city that they no longer plan to use this particular portion of their property, which is now a separate parcel for school purposes. And when they did notify us of that, that's when it came under the the governing control of the city's general plan and zoning. But this is the first proposal, what you see before you tonight is the first actual proposal where an application was filed.
I see. So will the the ownership still be under the Ocean View School District? Or will that be sold off?
Chris, you can, can you confirm that this is, this parcel is owned by the school district, I believe?
It will continue to be owned by them?
Yes, the operator has a long-term lease.
I see, got it. Thank you, thank you.
Question?
I have a question. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sorry, customer. Can you elaborate on the on the planning commission's added condition about the enhancements on the wings? What was that? You know, what what was their recommendation?
Yeah, the commission, well, Commissioner Don Anderson wanted to add some additional architectural embellishments to those four ends of the building. I think ultimately what happened was there was some confusion on the floor plan, I mean, I'm sorry, on the elevations. Because the building is so angular, I think Commissioner Anderson looked at the elevations and kind of believed that some of the elevations were blank. While the elevations towards the rear of the site do lack some embellishment, I mean, those areas of the of the project site are not as visible to the street or even to the public. But even so, the applicant was willing to embellish those areas. So the commission unanimously voted to add that condition into the approval. Or the recommended approval.
Okay, and then, and was there a trip generation study done on this project?
Yes, there was.
And where, what was, I think I read it was underneath the the requirement, right?
Can answer that question, Vice Mayor. I worked very closely with the planning department on this project, and we brought in our own consultant. That's a new practice that we have put in place here at the city is that we control the consultants that are doing work on these development projects. That way we keep them true to the task at hand and and make sure that the numbers that we get back from them are consistent with policies and procedures. We did receive a trip generation calculation from them, and it is it is significantly below the threshold that would require additional analysis. We also approved SB 743 two years ago. I presented to this council the latest requirements for evaluating impacts per CEQA. So this project was the very first project in the city's history that qualified for that type of an analysis. So there was even an extra analysis that was done to be to be consistent with CEQA as it pertains to transportation. And it also presented that there were no impacts related to the project.
Yeah, I see that on the staff report that residents, I mean, won't be drivers, I mean, being seniors in need of care. Alright, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir.
Can I have a quick questions? It's very interesting to see this very odd-shaped parcel that's been developed, and this is my hand off to the developer who trying to seek out vacant land and try to build something with the LOE, so. My question is, you know, I don't deal with this often in the council. So is it customary or legal for the the information presented to the council minus the, who is the applicant is, except the name of the company?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Doe, could I, are you asking, is there a reason why the applicant's information is provided? Yes. Yes, that is public information, and we typically provide that for the public's benefit and certainly planning commission and council. And you, I believe you had asked, you know, if I understood also why this is before you. Typically, when you have a project that involves a conditional use permit and a development review, that's something that can be reviewed and potentially approved by the planning commission. And only would come to the council if it was appealed, or if a council member chose to essentially appeal it or call it up. However, in this situation, what's before you tonight is the conditional use permit and the development review. In addition, you have a general plan amendment and a zone change. The parcel currently is designated by the general plan, and as Chris said a little bit earlier, for public school use. And so one of the actions that's before you tonight is to amend the general plan so it could be used for residential purposes and also the zoning. So it could be used for residential purposes. Those those actions, which are legislative actions, those have to, those must come before the council. So for this particular project, because of the, because of the requests involved, particularly the general plan amendment and zone change, the planning commission's role is only to act as an advisory board. So it has to come before the council for your consideration.
Okay, and my question was, was there any legal issue that the applicant's information is not provided to the city council?
Well, it's in the application form, and I believe the staff report. Chris, can you verify, is the staff report have the applicant's information?
I scanned through it. I didn't, I didn't see anything. So I'm just, I'm asking so I have better understanding of what we have to deal with here. So procedure rule, yes, no, why, the policy, whatever, I, you know, it's just information, but the council understands.
The city council report, I don't believe includes the applicant's information, but the planning commission report does. The template for the commission staff report does include at the very top.
Okay, so the planning commission have the privilege to look at the applicant's information, but council does not.
Well, the planning, well, the planning commission staff report was attached to the city council staff.
So is it there somewhere? Just name me, just give me the page number or something I can locate, you know, scanning through the hundred pages in here. So you can point it to me where it is, and then that's, that's my questions. Thank you very much.
The planning commission staff report is attachment eight.
In the loose package? Or in the binding, in a ballot book?
Yeah, in the loose package, I believe.
Attachment eight. Okay, I'll look for it. Thank you.
Mayor, my encouragement is to get to the public comments portion of it, and then the council can ask more questions if they have those.
Alright, so now I'd like to invite a member upon the public to speak on this item.
Okay, so I did receive one e-comment, so at this time I'll be reading that e-comment followed by anyone wishing to speak. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand, and if I could have the interpreter interpret that, please. Kit? We'll hold off, and I'll start off with the e-comment. So the e-comment was received by Ocean View School District, and they expressed support for the item and spoke about the beneficial component to the district and the community. So our first speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. Since the applicant has entered into a 60-year ground lease with Ocean View School District for this site, the city needs to ensure this project and the requested amendments are 100% consistent with the goals, policies, and strategies of all elements of the city's general plan and zoning requirements. I don't like to see vacant land zone for public semi-public use changed to private residential use unless the project benefits the general public. It can be argued that residential care for the elderly does indeed benefit one segment of the public, but it also benefits the applicant. I reviewed the documents in the staff report, and my conclusion is this project is like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole and shaving off the corners to make it fit. The staff report states a zoning map amendment for the project site is necessary, changing the site from public semi-public to R3 multi- to R three multifamily residential thirteen to fourteen units per acre. And that such amendment would be consistent with the housing element program two B one point one. The justification given for the medium density designation is that it's an appropriate transition between the higher dense intensity and lower intensity land uses in the immediate area. The housing element mandates zoning for true residential housing growth prioritizing higher density affordable housing. How does this more commercial use of a sixty-bed assisted living facility contribute to the city's affordable housing needs? There are four similar uh facilities in Westminster, three are high density, in high density are five zones which allow nineteen to twenty-four units per acre and one is in a C two commercial general business zone designated as a mixed-use corridor in the general plan. Yes, these other four facilities have more beds in this project, ninety-two to one hundred and sixty-four versus sixty beds. But R three does not seem to be appropriate zoning for this, especially taking into account the length of the lease and how little undeveloped land is available to build affordable housing in Westminster. The maximum density for R three is one unit per three thousand square feet. The applicant states the project is equivalent to eighteen housing units derived by assuming three point four or five residents per unit as established in the housing element. Again, the square peg, round hole metaphor. If this project was truly eighteen units on one point nine eight acres, it would be zoned R two, which allows eight to twelve units per acre. These calculations are skewed because the building is only thirty-one percent of the eighty-six thousand two hundred square foot site, which is vastly different from a typical multifamily development. How much of that large open space will be utilized and by whom? The Westminster Design Guideline Manual for Commercial Uses recommends that a vehicle entering a parking facility should not be required to enter a street or alley to move from one location to any other location with the same premises. The applicant opines the project is not a commercial center and therefore this guideline does not apply. I disagree. If a visitor or staff member pulls into their designated lot but can't find an open space, it will be forced to go back out onto aisle and in traffic just to look for an open space in the other lot. This project provides twenty-five parking spaces in two different lots with two different entrances, including eight, two eighty accessible spaces, which does appear to apply with the Westminster Municipal Code seventeen point three two oh point zero two zero. However, I'm having trouble with the math here. The report states that the maximum number of staff onsite at any one time will be approximately twenty-four during the period of nine AM to five PM Monday through Friday. Yet, there are only nineteen designated staff parking spaces. Where are the other five staff, five staff members supposed to park? And where, where are the visiting staff such as outside contractors supposed to park? The main entrance lot has just six spaces, two of which are designated ADU spaces, so really only four open spaces. Yes, residential care facilities with seven or more residents are technically only required to have one parking space for every three patient beds. But the parking must be able to accommodate staff and visitor needs for a facility of this size. The applicant's response to my public comments about these issues during the planning commission hearing was merely that the parking for staff would be addressed through carpooling, other family member drop-off and public transfer, transportation. So are they going to hire a certain number of employees that must agree to getting to work via one of these alternate modes of transportation? Is that even legal? Council, please ask the applicant to do the math again and answer these questions for you. And by the way, the applicant is Kevin Moriarty, Mr. Tito. The address for this project is eighty-two fifty-one Hail, Hail, which is the address of Westmont Elementary School. Why wasn't a unique address applied for and approved at the time the lot adjustment was done? The staff report lists building address under non, other non-discretionary separate applications, but it does not indicate when that will happen. Is this putting the cart before the horse? As a young senior myself, I support. Hello? As a young senior myself, I support having these facilities in our city. The need is there and will only grow over the coming years. I just want to make sure these projects are done right and that all of the details are ironed out prior to the city's final approval. Thank you, and I think staff should have been able to, to give Mr. Councilman Tito the name of the applicant very easily. Thank you.
Our next speaker is the applicant, Kevin Moriarty.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, uh, good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for the opportunity to address you tonight. Uh, as you've heard, my name is Kevin Moriarty and I'm the president and CEO of Active Care Living. Uh, the company which will be the developer as well as the operator of the project that's before you tonight. Uh, we're very pleased to be here tonight as it means that Active Care will soon be able to begin serving the residents of Westminster and its surrounding communities with our very special brand of residential memory care. As you're probably aware, when Alzheimer's disease touches a family, it does so with a cruel combination of symptoms which can cause great stress and pain in any family. And so it's been our company's mission to minimize this stress on these families while at the same time maximizing the quality of life for the elderly family member who's actually afflicted with this terrible disease. Um, our company, Active Care, has been taking care of folks with memory issues and their families for over thirty years. Uh, we're a very small Southern California company based in San Diego that specializes in caring for those who are suffering from Alzheimer's disease as well as other types of dementia. The founder of our company was actually the driving force behind the creation of the very first uh secured perimeter residential memory care communities in the entire state of California back in the early nineties. So we're very excited to finally be able to offer our services to the families of Westminster and the surrounding communities. We're especially excited because our study of the local market has shown that there is a definite need for the dedicated memory care that we will be offering. In the city of Westminster, there's currently only about seventy beds of memory care available. And if you include nearby Huntington Beach, there's still only about two hundred beds serving a combined population of about three hundred thousand people. So the need is real. Uh, we've been blessed with uh working with the Ocean View School District on the proposal for this property. Uh, as Chris described for you earlier, this site is part of the Westmont Elementary School property, even though as you've also heard, uh, it is now a separate legal lot thanks to the lot line that was uh completed last year. That was done administratively uh at the city staff level. Uh, our agreement with the school district, as you've also heard, is in the form of a long-term sixty-year ground lease where the district remains the owner of the property while we have the full use of the property to develop the project and then operate it for the entirety of that term. We're very grateful to the district for their support and their cooperation in this process and, and we look forward to a long and fruitful relationship with them as well as the city of Westminster. We believe that once our new community is completed, the surrounding neighborhood will find us to be an excellent neighbor. It is certainly not unusual for folks who live nearby a proposed project to have some concerns about potential negative effects that they think a development might have on their neighborhood. Those concerns usually focus on some of the things you've already heard, uh, traffic, noise, parking, views, other similar things. Uh, anything that would concern any of us if in our own neighborhoods. It's always very satisfying for me to engage with folks in discussions of each of these issues because our proposed use uh compares very favorably to any other use in every one of these areas. Uh, and the results of the SEQA environmental studies that Chris referenced earlier bear that out. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, uh, traffic, for example. The exact number of trips per day that our study uh showed was a hundred and fifty-six total trips per day. That's uh only sixteen was the maximum number of trips, sixteen trips per hour in the maximum hour of the day out of that a hundred and fifty-six in the day. So in other words, uh, one car coming or going from our site about every four minutes at the, during the busiest hour of the day. So as, as our SEQA study concluded, this is well below the threshold that would be considered significant or even would require a full traffic study as staff has, has told you. Uh, noise is also not a concern as our, our elderly residents spend the vast uh majority of their time indoors because of the their condition. And when they are outdoors, uh, we have dedicated outdoor spaces. You saw the photos earlier in Chris's presentation of the enclosed courtyards on either side of the building that are open and available to them at all times, weather permitting, uh, but safe and secure to keep them safe. Uh, deliveries to the building will be controlled and occur only during working hours. And the residential properties across from the street, across the street from us are, are hundreds of feet from where those deliveries occur. So there's really no noise impact there as well. Uh, another potential concern is always parking, as you've already heard it mentioned already. Uh, as you've heard also, our, our residents do not drive because they all have Alzheimer's or some other form of dementia. Therefore, the parking requirements are minimal. Uh, but our proposed project exceeds by twenty-five percent the number of parking space required by the Westminster Development Codes. We'll have twenty-five onsite, as you've heard, when only twenty are required according to the development regulations. Uh, we are very confident with all of the overflow parking available on Hile Avenue. In, in case it's ever needed, we will have no parking impact on the adjacent neighborhood. So we've been pleased to work with Chris and Steve on your planning staff to reach this hearing with you tonight. Uh, through their good work with us, we believe we've created a project which meets all of our operational needs going forward while also satisfying all the city's development regulations and environmental standards. Chris did a great job of presenting the rest of the facts and figures about our project and won't take up any more time repeating his good work. But I am available here to answer any questions you may have or clarify anything you might need regarding the project. Uh, in closing, we would like to say we'd be very grateful for your vote of approval tonight. Thank you.
Alright, so do we have any question or concerns for the applicant? So uh.
I have a, uh, Mayor, I have a quick question for Mr. Moriarty. Mr. Moriarty, can you um speak about um parking for staff and, and how that would work? Um, one of the callers mentioned um, the amount of staff you would have and the amount of parking spots available. Um, can you speak to that, please?
Mr. Moriarty?
Thank you, just got unmuted, thank you. Um, yes, this, this concern is, is common. It comes up every time because um the math that was referenced on the surface could be a little um misleading. Uh, it is a, a true statement, our maximum staff during the day shift uh during the middle of the week is in the neighborhood of twenty-four or so employees. Uh, and it is true that the uh less than half of those employees typically in our other operating communities of this size, less than half of those folks actually drive their own car to work for their shift. There is a large percentage of our employees who use public transportation, who carpool with other employees or uh use their bicycles or other ways of getting to work. Uh, we've, we've had this issue come up on numerous projects that we have developed in the past in different jurisdictions. And so therefore, we've done numerous parking studies uh with third-party consultants that have um analyzed the existing usage of our existing communities that are nearly identical to our proposed project here and have shown that this uh percentage that I'm referring to is, is accurate. Uh, in, in reality, we've never had in any of our communities uh an issue with parking. So we've had to uh only on rare occasions when we've had uh special events which don't occur often, we have had special needs for parking and we make arrangements for those off-site. But on a regular basis, day to day, on an ongoing basis, it's, it's never an issue for us.
Thank you, and uh the issue, one of the callers mentioned about the address uh being the same as the school site, is that, I'm assuming that, that being worked on, correct?
Um, yes, I'm still unmuted, sorry about that, Vice Mayor. Um, my understanding and, and staff could probably address this more accurately than I, but my understanding is that the address will be assigned when we apply for um building permits at that time. Uh, but I, I, not the authority on that subject.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got. Oh, and then you're okay with the, with the planning commission's uh added condition?
Yes, we are.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Alright, do we have any other question from other members?
I have my one quick question, so is there a uh parking allowed on Hiles? Do, do we have any opinions?
I'm sorry.
Curve side parking on, on Hiles, do we?
Yes, there is, parking allowed on, on Hile Avenue.
Ohio, so, cool, thank you.
So I have a question, so on Hile Avenue, is that like half street, like belong to Westminster and other half like, like belong to Huntington Beach?
That's my understanding, yes, that the uh, the border of the two cities runs down the center line of the street.
Okay, so uh, in the planning commission, is there any concern from any, any member from uh Westminster or Huntington Beach regarding uh the parking issue?
It was my understanding when we did our community outreach um that the three attendees that were there were all Huntington Beach residents from the neighborhood across the street.
I see. Alright, any uh, any other question from a member of the city council? Okay, I see. None? Thank you so much for answering all the concerns from uh some of us.
Alright. When the council uh decides what it's gonna do in this project, I would recommend that you take it in two motions. Yeah, assuming you were going to agree to it, but if you do, uh, there are two resolutions which you could take as one motion and then a second motion related to the ordinance, which is item B on the recommended actions.
So you're saying the item, item B is, it should be a separate motion?
Yes, I like to separate uh ordinances from, approval of ordinances from resolutions. So uh, I would recommend two motions, one to approve the resolution, A and C. And then secondarily, the ordinance.
Move to approve?
I make the motion to um, well, customer, do you want to do, uh, approve A and B, A and C?
A, yeah, A and B, as recommended.
A and C.
A and C.
A second.
Alright, we have the motion. And second floor, to prove, uh, A and C as recommended.
That was a motion made by Councilmember Doe and a second by Vice Mayor Monzo. And that was to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster adopting a mitigated negative declaration associated with case number twenty twenty dash eleven twenty-seven involving a general count amendment, zoning map amendment, conditional use permit, and development review for the proposed development of a residential care facility, facility on property located at eighty-two five-one Hile Avenue, assessors parcel numbers one oh seven two two zero six eight and one oh seven two two zero six nine. And adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster approving case number twenty twenty eleven twenty-seven involving a general plan amendment, conditional use permit, CPU and development review for the proposed development of a residential care facility on property located at eighty-two fifty-one Hile Avenue. Assessors parcel numbers one oh seven two two zero six eight and one oh seven two two zero, zero six nine. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta? Mayor Ta?
Yes, yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Make a motion to approve as recommended for item number.
Alright, we have the motion and a second floor to approve item B uh this uh public hearing.
That was a motion made by Vice Mayor Monzo and a second by Mayor Ta. And that was to introduce an ordinance for first reading entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster amending the Westminster Municipal Code and the, and the official city of Westminster zoning map from P slash S P public semi-public to R three multifamily residential thirteen to fourteen units acre. For property located at eighty-two fifty-one Hile Avenue, assessors parcel numbers one oh seven two two zero six eight and one oh seven two two zero six nine, read by title only and wait for the reading. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Alright. All right, next we have record of this is in the Westminster three years strategic plan and six month.
Mr. Mayor, can I just real quick to say good luck to Mr. Moretti and and? Hope of my success and a needed, uh, service for our community. And a best improvement for this, uh, site as well. Thank you.
Move to prove on fact one.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and second to prove item five for one.
And that was a motion made by Councilmember Nguyen and a second by Vice Mayor Hanzo, and that was to adopt the six-month strategic objective matrix from January seventeen, twenty twenty-two through June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next item five for two relation of policy for interaction between city staff and outside parties. So staff, uh, can you give us, you know? The information for this item?
Sure. So this is a request from Councilmember Ho. Um, and so it was a request for to, uh, consider. Um, a creating a policy for interactions, um, between city staff and outside parties. So consultants, developers, people coming into city hall, et cetera. Um, it's a bit of an extension, um, for, you know, to protect staff and, um. It's an extension of the previous policy that was, uh, approved by the council that protected. Um, it kind of gave a little bit more, um, assurances for staff with council, you know, staff and council, um, and other appointed officials, uh, interaction. So this just expanded that.
That is true.
Is there an example of something that you can, that this would look like?
Well, so and so that's part of where this discussion comes in. Um, we were. So we tried looking for a few, just a few cursory, uh, policies, couldn't find it, but, um, ultimately, um. We would probably, uh, do this the same way that, um, or that's suggestion, um, how the, uh, previous interaction policy was handled is. If this is something that the city council is interested in pursuing, um, then we'd go to a more in-depth, uh, research for that, um, in which we would, you know. Have a little bit more time to to find some, you know, to find more policy, to find any policies out there if there are any. And then, you know, perhaps a. Council subcommittee, um, can review and and generate one that you see, you know, fit, you know, that would fit Westminster.
Do another ad hoc?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Okay, since this is my item, may I start?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks, Christine. Okay, so, uh, the reason for this is because, uh, we really haven't had a a clear. Policy for the interactions between city staff and outside parties. And, um, as said earlier, and we know we've been working on our city staff and our council people, but not for outside parties. And I'll give you an example as, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Monzo asked her for earlier. I've seen council members being present at, um, uh, at inspections, like, you know, code enforcement inspections. Um, of their donors establishments and, um, outside attorneys calling on our city staff or city attorney. To strategize their own roundabout ways, uh, you know, like, um. Uh, shall I say to get around processes that that are already in place? To me, I think that's just unacceptable. And I think, um. You know, unfortunately, we have to have policies for, but, well, we hope we don't have to have policies for everything. Sometimes you do have to exercise. You know, good judgment. So we don't have to come up with a policy for everything, but it looks like we have to on this one. So once.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you, uh, wouldn't be so kind, repeat the scenario again? I I kind of like did not completely get it. The CD and, uh, CD, uh, code enforcement were doing a code enforce.
Yeah.
And then the council member present or?
Yeah, so I, um, you know, I wanted to give you an example, so otherwise you would have no idea. Um, why I brought forth this, uh, recommendation to create a policy. So, um, and these are not limited to 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 these, uh, really not to cure these particular, uh, incidents. But, um, these are just your examples, um, that actually happen. Um, so is it kosher for a council member to be present at a code enforcement, um, inspection of their donors establishments? Okay, so I really don't think if you know about that, you would say no, because that to me is what, um, you're you're. Putting pressure on staff. And so, well, I'll go into that and as to the reason why, I don't think those are, that's a very good. Um, policy or not to have a policy and things will get out of hand. And they don't necessarily have to say anything in order to put pressure on staff, but just by merely by being there, just their their presence alone. Will, um, you know, will speak volumes on, um, on, on, on the pressure, um, um, you know, et cetera. So, um. And then, um, you know, outside attorneys calling our attorney and going direct. And do going, calling our, uh, you know, um, let's say if they were to call our department heads directly. To strategize and to come up with a, a way to get around, you know, our process, things like that. And that actually happened. So is that? Uh, so I think the reason for the creation of this policy is to, number one, minimize the influence from the outside developers, attorneys, et cetera, on our staff. And contractors. So our staff, when I say our staff would be, well, contractors would be like our city attorney, he would be considered our, our contractor, not our. He's not on staff. So that's why I call him contractors. Uh, and then number two would be ensuring that developers know and understand their roles and the chain of command. And that they need to follow the pre-established process as to who should be spoke, they should be speaking to or should be spoken to. So. They should no longer, they should not be going directly to our people, um, directly to, you know, they should be going to the CM. They should be going to the city manager and as long as the city manager says, okay, you know, let's involve our city attorney. Then that's, that's when the city, city attorney should be involved. Otherwise, I feel like, okay, you know, this is, this was getting out of hand because you were making side bets and, um, side, um. Um, you know, plans and, um, and then you 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 leave, uh, the city manager out of it. And as a result, you cannot come come up with something that is odd and 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 made especially for for their special interest groups. And we are trying to to prevent intimidation and manipulation of staff and manipulation of the process. Or the system and and prevent harassment of our city staff. And the other is to prevent waste of our resources, because let's say if they call directly on, uh, our city attorney. Well, our city attorney is gonna bill us, whether we see the bill or not. As councils, we. Well, we haven't seen any bills. But when we did ask for the bill, we did see certain things that were, you know, not, that we had no knowledge that they were going direct. So, so to prevent waste of wasted resources and most important of all, putting everyone, the constituents, developers on equal playing field. So that no one is more special than the other, including your donors. Okay, so. I don't like to like, like I said, I don't like to name names, but if you make me, I will. The only thing I want to do is to make sure we have a process, have a policy. For for the interactions between our city staff and outside parties. I would like to create an ad hoc committee, subcommittee, as recommended, um, of two. To evaluate policies from other cities and to develop one that is best fit for our council consideration. So I would be one on that subcommittee. I would, uh, like to have one more person.
I hope. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I? Speak briefly?
Please, yes.
I just want to clarify for the record, just because I want to make make it clear. I understand what Councilmember Ho is seeking to do, and I think that's a good idea. Um, I just want to clarify that at no time did the city attorney, I could probably count on. One hand, how many times people have actually approached me. I think the intent is to try to limit. Outside parties from reaching out to me to try and manipulate the process. I have never manipulated the process. Um, but there have been some situations where people have tried to reach out to me, um, as again, um. You know, but again, I've always referred that back to the city manager. I don't want to give the impression that there were situations where I manipulated a process. That is not. The case. And, uh, I think what she's trying to protect against is these outside parties trying to influence staff, which I think is appropriate.
Yeah, I did. That's the same, the same what I got, uh, Christian, that what you just mentioned, I was gonna bring that up. Oh, yeah. So if you had, you've had, you just said you you had maybe a handful of I of times that that's happened. And what what's been like a typical request or question? For something like, like she, uh, Councilmember Ho mentioned, uh, code enforcement issues. Has there been any calls about code enforcement issues, uh, from outside parties?
Well, I mean, um, I mean, Christine, go ahead and, uh, I I I think you should let our council people know because you want to know. Uh, I'm I'm fine with discussing it, um, it it for the the sake of discussing because, um. You mentioned to me that certain council member, because I asked, so, so I did ask. And you did tell me certain council member was there at the, uh, time of inspection, but that person did not, uh, interfere. So I don't understand when you're there, your mere presence is already an interference. I I don't know if you the rest of you agree with that.
No idea.
Even if you shut up and you stand there, but by standing there is interfering. So what gives you the right as a councilor person? Or do we have the right? To stand there, to be there at an inspection and to be intimidating our city coast code enforcement? Because that's an intimidating tactic. And especially when the person hands the phone to, to, um. You know, and, uh, and and as a lot, I see that a lot of intimidating tactics being used. On our code enforcement. And you need to recognize that, Christine. And if if you don't, if these tactics don't stop, I may have to spell it out. You know, you know me, I just want to make sure we have something, then we'll, and then we're gonna hold their feet to to the fire, but. If we're gonna make me spell it out, I'll spell it out. And I think you you might want to discuss it. Is it okay for people to, for council people to be at an inspection? When the code enforcement or everybody's trying to do their work, trying to do their jobs? What gives the right for the council person? Do we have the right to be there? And if, if so, let's just say it. And then everybody will have the same rights. And do the same thing. It wouldn't be fair. One person's doing it, the rest don't. To me, I don't think we should. But if you think, and it just make it clear that we should or should not. And I I I want to make sure that that person is not gonna do that anymore. Now. What do you think?
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so, so, uh, yeah, I I can totally understand. Castlewoman Kimberly Hall, where you coming from with this policy? And and I think it's great. I mean, I'm, um, um. I totally support policy and I say the, I say it and they say it again, policy. Protect us, protect the city, protect staff. It was a boundary that gave us a parameter to operate and, uh. Um, it's great. Um, the situation you describe. You know, it happened all the time and 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 in, um, a lot of cities, um, not just, uh, our city in particular. Um, the 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 issue right here, you we cannot regulate a elected official behavior in this particular, um, incident you described. Well. We can't forbid them to 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 be there. Uh, but we can regulate how the city staff, uh, behave and what they do after that. Uh, most city will have a policy, um, that require the, uh, the city staff. If they happen to come across, uh, there's certain scenario, circumstances where they come across, excuse me. Elected official, they can document the incident and immediately report it to their supervisor and especially the city manager. And it should be a policy and procedure that, um, mandated that the city employee has, there's certain step that they have to do. Uh, if they come across the, um, elective official in the course of their, um, performance of the job. So we get, you know, I I think it's a good idea to have, um, you know, I I I mentioned it before and I advocate for, um. Policy to protect city employees. When you come in contact with any elected official in the course of your duty at the city employees. You have the certain step you have to take to, number one, protect yourself and number two, notify your superior, your chain of command. And document the incident. And let the, uh, chain of command know what happened. Uh, so i- i- in that sense, I I think it's a, it's a, it's a good, uh, item. I mean, I totally support it, uh, if that's the case, but. Um, it's impossible to regulate how an elected official behavior. We have a code of conduct. We have that. I think that's, uh, it's adequate. But right now, just to give the, this policy will give CD staff some confidence, some procedurals, um. To, uh, to respond, you know, every time they come in, come in contact, I come across, uh, elected fish. Does that make, make any sense?
Well. I, you you know, I I'm just, uh, thinking that, uh, to be fair, uh, we have, we've never stated, uh, whether. The elected official should or should not be there, um, whether that is, uh, and, you know. Um, that's a good thing or the bad thing. Well, of course, you know, for me, I think it's a bad thing. So I mean, I I rather not leave it to chance or to, um, you know. For misinterpretation or for people to interpret, because everybody's going to, you know, everybody's gonna have. Um, their own thoughts on that. So I'd rather we spell it out and say, yes, you know, is it gonna cause intimidation? If it does, then we should say very clearly that it should not be, you know, that that when, when you have an inspection, there it is. You know, you, the council people should not be there, here, because that is interfering with with our city staff. And, you know, in this case, the council person was called on when the inspection happened, and I really don't think that that's right. For the, for the council, for for council members to be there, you know. So, um, this is why, and like I said, um, we could discuss it some more, um, when we have that little sub, uh, subcommittee. And then just look into other policies with other people have. Like I said, you know, if we don't make some policies and make it clear. And and we can't really condemn anyone, uh, you know, and 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 I want to be fair to 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 everyone. So, um, if you could do that, that would be great. You know, that serves the purpose of this whole, um, agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Could I just quickly add?
Please.
In the municipal code gives the council really a legislative role, not an administrative role. And I think that's what the council members is speaking to, that, that going out and being present at an inspection or other. Actions of staff is getting into administration when really they need to, um, maintain that legislative role, which is. Passing legislation and overseeing appeals and such that come to them. Um, but, uh, not to get actively involved in the day-to-day affairs of the business of the city. I think that's what you're speaking to.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah.
No question, Mayor. Uh. Uh, it seemed to me, it seemed to me very serious that, uh, what council member who brought it up, um, you know, uh. Uh, it seemed to me, it seemed to me very serious that, uh, what council member Ho brought it up, um, you know, uh, that council council member involved at the inspection, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't spell out who, who is doing that. And I, I, if it's you kindly enough to say that who, who got involved, yeah, of course, we don't want to, to name people, but at the same time, uh, you know, because you are trying, you are telling that this is, uh, a violation from, you know, from your standpoint, that the the council, one of the council member or one mayor, I don't know who, uh, that involved that, uh, we at the site of the inspection and things like that. Can you kindly name who is that person and, and when and, and, you know, so that we know?
Would you like me to?
Yes, please. I asking, I'm asking you. And also, uh, you know, you mentioned, uh, CD interim CD as, uh, uh, I'm in CD manager be, uh, before. So I also want to ask to see if there is, you know, would you, uh, interim city manager, go ahead and mention if you have, if you know anything of, uh, any of those case?
Now I'm curious. I want to know who.
Yes, I am curious too.
Okay, it was, it was you who was present at the, in the code enforcement.
You who?
You as the chief, probably, when.
Okay, said.
Present there at the inspection of, and the code enforcement visit um, to the establishment. And, um, you were there the whole time. And, yes.
Okay.
I, I, like I said, this is an item where I want to create a.
No, 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 you need to say where and what, what, where and when it's happened. Because you don't, you can accuse me for saying that I don't.
Did I even, you know, you're the one who asked me who.
You just mentioned my name. You should mention my name that I was there for the whole time.
Can, can, can I, can I, Mayor, can we?
Maybe Christine, or would you?
Please, please.
Get back on.
Can we, uh, can we just?
Because everybody wants to know, so would you like, would you mind letting everybody know?
I think the vice mayor.
And, and I was asking the mayor for some leadership. Can we just like stop playing this, these games and I think it's a good idea. Let's either make a motion and, and act on it and, and move on. I think, you know, we don't need to do this. We don't need to do this. What, uh, council member, uh, council member Wen is leading. I mean, we don't need to play those games anymore. Come on, let's, let's move on.
Okay, you, you know what? There's no name of mention earlier. Uh, I, I, I think and councilman Wen insists upon that. And I think it's just fair for councilwoman Kimberly Ho, you know, my, well, finish what you were trying to say, uh, because I certainly do not um, just like to see the, uh, the interim city manager be interacting through this. If you know the information, just, uh, you just say it. So that would save us, uh, time, you know, and and suffering, so.
Yeah, I just think it's a good idea. This just, if somebody has a motion and, and let's just make the motion and move on, uh.
I, I think it's a great, uh, uh, policy. I totally, uh, I think I, I can see that the city staff uh can benefit from that. It gives, um, give the city staff some protection because as of now, that's our thing to protect the city employees. Um, because, uh, but, but make sure that they have some teeth into it. Um, because, you know, we can introduce an ordinance or whatever, but then the majority of the city council might change and um, suddenly the city staff do not want to be under receiving and of it being intimidated, lose their job. You know, they, they follow the policy and the procedure to, uh, report it to the, uh, the encounter with an elected official through their chain of command. So, um, you know, I, I think it's a great policy. I totally support it and, and that's all we need right now.
Yes, I agree too. Let's just, um, I just, I just don't like to play these. I think where the other community is tired of these, these kind of issues. The council member Wen, there was, there was no need to go there. Council member Ho wasn't going to do that. And we just creating a bunch of unnecessary drama.
Okay, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Manuel. Um, first of all, she, uh, she said that that's what was the reason why she brought up that's this issues because of the involvement of the council members. And secondly, when I asked, when, 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 when I asked for it, she mentioned my name. And she been accused me before that I, I was into action with, with her uh son, you know, for, uh, for their, um, projects, you know, related to, um, planning commissioner's approval. And I told you guys that I'd never, you know, at the time that I, I, I appoint her son, until the day that, you know, we, we called it off, I have never met him and talked to him. Okay, so that, that.
Some things want to hash out, hash out.
Vice Mayor, you know, uh, I, I think that we should give, you know, customer Wen opportunity to speak for himself. I appreciate that.
And, and, and today she said that, you know, um, that I was involved at the site inspection for the whole time with the court inspector. To be honest with you, I never, I have never, for all my three years up to this year, the time is for, for the fourth year, I'd never been at, at any site with the, the inspector and, and involve anything. So I challenged her to accuse me on that and give me the date and time and, 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 and we can go forward on this. Just don't say that, you know, because this will give, you know, the people, um, you know, uh, different, uh, view, uh, about the council that doing that, but it's not, in, in fact, it's never happened.
But she was. Name and then.
It didn't happen, and I would not have you sit here and.
I think, I think I would, would have.
I would be appreciative if only one person's speaking, please, yes.
Mr. Mayor, because I am being accused. I asked for, I asked for, I have.
The person didn't want to say any names. And then you want me to give you names.
That's right, that's right.
Mayor, if I, if I may, we, we have a, we have an agenda item that talks about a creation of a policy for interactions between city staff and outside parties. That's the subject matter. And we have to be careful not to go beyond what the subject is that is on the agenda. And I, and I think is we're, we're going a little bit too afield of that.
All right, so we're not going to get into the detail. Okay, I appreciate, okay. So, uh.
Okay, I have, I have a question. I have a question to the city, uh, city manager. Do we have such a policy right now to mandate that city employee had to a file memo or reported to, uh, their supervisor or the city manager of any contact, uh, that they have to the, uh, elected official? On, on a day-to-day basis?
For anything or for just? For this particular, for an inspection?
For anything work-related that they come across, and that guy might be interfere with his job or being intimidated. I mean, if the, if the city council call and ask question, of course, this is a non-issue, right? But it's, uh, for some reason it come across and if, if for any reason they feel intimidated, um, do they, uh, do they get mandated to report?
Well, I mean, any, well, anytime, so going back to the policy that was approved for council interactions, but anytime that an employee feels intimidated by anyone in particular, they should be reporting to their supervisor or, you know, yeah, just to their supervisor. And depending which way it goes, it goes to HR, it, you know, I'm brought into the mix generally if there's something along the lines of city council members, then I'm brought into the mix. But there's, yeah, there's, there's like, there's no, there's no, there's no reporting form or anything.
Okay. That, that's my, that might be something that we might want to entertain and we intend to, uh, to come up as a policy, so. Thank you. So what's next?
So is there a motion? What's going on?
Our second to form an ad hoc committee, am I right?
Yes, so who's going to be on the ad hoc committee with me?
I would nominate, uh, Vice Mayor Mantle, you know, or, uh, council member Wen, if you're interested.
I would like to do it, but I'm kind of busy. And, uh, if there's nobody else, if we can do it at, you know, and they late, late evenings or at four o'clock in the morning.
Anytime, anytime.
I nominate, uh, the mayor to be, uh, the second person on the ad hoc committee.
All right, Eve, uh, no, our council member? So, have any, has time? Okay, so, I exactly, okay.
Okay, so I move to approve five point two. Inform an ad, not ad hoc subcommittee with, uh, myself and Mayor Truton.
A second.
We have a motion and second on the floor.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
For the record, uh, I believe that the, for creation of the policy, uh, is a good idea. But because I don't trust on, uh, you know, the reasoning for, uh, you know, um, having this presented by council member Ho, so my vote is no.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried four one with council member Nguyen voting no.
All right, so, uh, next item. Uh, time limit for council member during discussion of agenda items.
Yes, um, man, councils, um, as we have seen, uh, in multiple media, council meetings, that one of, one, uh, um, more of council take up to like fifteen minutes, sometime up to thirty minutes or more to present his or her input for an item being discussed. And especially at times that the same information was repeated over and over again. And I have seen this happen to everyone on the council, it's myself included. With that, uh, I, we should be cognizant to, uh, you know, the, a lot of time that we, we need to, um, to be recognized so that, uh, other council members, uh, you know, have a chance to present themselves. I mean, this, this process here is, you know, if I have a chance to, you know, to follow, uh, what in, um, uh, Congress, uh, they also have their, the time recognized by each senator to, to present that, that, you know, sometime only five minutes, sometime more. So, you know, it happened, uh, you know, up in, 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 uh, Washington. I think each council should be recognized, uh, and allowed to present, uh, their opinions without interference. Unless such overwhelming, if the defamation oratory statement or assaulting other council, then, you know, uh, we can voice the opinion and then the, the mayor or whoever conducted meeting should, uh, stop, uh, you know, uh, the, that council.
I'm sorry, overwhelming what? Could you repeat that overwhelming what?
Well, overwhelming, you know, like assaulting and, and, you know, saying something is im- improperly, yeah, in the council. Then other council can, can voice their opinion and then, you know, we, we can interfere. Now, the time I, that I, that I propose is, you know, it should be limited to five minutes. And then use the floor back to the other council members for comments. Council input and our opinions, uh, could be continued if so desired. When they have a, had a chance to hear other council members presented their opinions. And items, uh, could be discussed, discussed however long the council needed to reach the decision. I think that, that, you know, we need to, to have the decision at the end of the day. Though call for question for, call for question should only be allowed when each council at least had a chance to go to a second round for his or her inputs, I think is fair that way. Because after they heard the other council, they need to, you know, they either accept it or they, 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 they might have a different idea. So two routes of, 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 of discussion for important issues, I think is, is fair. So I have the feeling that, you know, um, I, I, I think that, uh, this is a fairly, um, requested and is much, much needed, uh, policy for this council to adopt. So, you know, uh, that's my, uh, that's my, uh, uh, you know, I, I want to present it to the council and so, you know, hopefully that we have a fair and equal time to, uh, present, uh, you know, uh, the ideas.
I believe that I understand the good intention from, uh, councilwoman, councilwoman Wen, because I think that we already heard, um, uh, member from the public, you know, majority of, you know, that the public member, they don't want to see us in fighting in a meeting and I, I understand the reason. We all understand the reason. So I think that the good intention from council member Wen is, uh, they make the time of each council member uh, up to five minutes for every time he or she speak on any, on any item on agenda. And, you know, after, I think after round one, after all member council speak, so I think that I will ask for the second round. If member of council still want to discuss another five minutes. I mean, if we, uh, approve that process, I think that going to, uh, I think that really help our meeting to be, uh, more effective. And at the same time, all member of the city council all have the same opportunity to speak. I think that's it, a good intention from, uh, council member Wen. Am I correct? Anything that you want to add into it?
That, that's very much it. Yeah, I think that, that is fair and I think it's needed for our councils.
I'm not sure that the other council member think, but I think this is a really, really good intention. So, uh, all member of council have same opportunity to speak. How, whether to agree or disagree any item. Uh, but I think that it really, really help to make sure that, uh, we speak on a subject and we, and it, we really know that, you know, we don't want to waste other, other government with time, yes. But everyone have equal time to speak, yes, including me, yes.
I may, uh, uh, asking, um, councilman Wen a couple of questions. So you want to limit each council person to speak? Or you're going to limit even the person who introduced the agenda, five minutes to speak when the agenda require however long to convey that message to the council? Wha- what are you trying to do?
Well, I think that, uh, you know, we try to present it in the five minutes time frame. And for other council, if they have question about it, they can also ask for more information. But at least, you know, for five minutes there, you give other council having a chance to, instead of, you know, sit, sitting there, listen to half an hour, they, they might forget what you already present at the beginning. And, you know, it, we, we can have the effective discussion that, that way.
Okay, so you want to, everybody have a chance to, uh, speak and counter and respond, is that correct?
Yeah, because this is, you know, council meeting and we need to, uh, you know, kick back ideas and, and, you know, opinions and, and, you know, and then at, at the end of the day, we, uh, came up with the, 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 you know, the decision together.
Okay, so we have to keep a clock. Somebody have to keep a clock. Every time someone speak, click the stopwatch. Is that right?
Council member though, uh, right now, you know, uh, for the, uh, for the public to make comments, they also have a five minute, uh, you know, uh, clock there. I mean, time frame, we just the same thing. There is no need for other people to click on that.
Okay, so. Uh, I mean, I'm trying to understand what you, what we trying to accomplish here. I love policy, don't get me wrong. I love policy, but something we can fall back on. So, you know, uh, this, this also a policy, so, but I, I'm trying to see is, do we have the need to do that? Because, you know, when, uh, when we discuss, we, uh, we, you know, usually, the, I usually speak, uh, regarding the matter that listed on the agenda. Um, but, you know, lately the issue has been arise because, uh, um, it's, it's a personal attack. And, uh, the mayor as a, um, a person who run the, uh, the city council meeting allow that to happen. So, um, it's become a, uh, a shouting match, a, uh, you know, we're not playing fair and, you know, right on the sandbox, you know, people, uh, the, the, the citizens complaining. And I think, I think that limit the time would not solve this problem. Limited time would give you more opportunity to do more personal attack and, and go off the tangent than address the issue that we are talking at hands. So, well, do we really want? So, well, do we really want to put a limit on that? If we really focus on what we are talking about, focus on the issue instead of personal attack? Okay, if we stop like, hey, you remember when you say this? You lying line, you know, something like that. And then you keep continuing, moving to the next person, you remember when you say this? And it just go all the way around the city council and it's created so much problem. And 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 the mayor who run the meeting also encourage that and allow you more time to attack because you, you know, it seems like you are the speak person for the mayor. So, you know, it seems to be the case and every time we have that, it's just dragging on and it's nothing but problem. So we need to focusing on what we are talking about and then we move on. No more personal attack. I think if we can do that, that will solve the problem. Recording stopped, that's what I heard.
Yeah, you know, well, it's still running on, it's still running live on YouTube right now.
So.
So councilmember, councilmember Ho, I mean, it's councilmember Doe to have to finish it? I like to present my.
For now, yes.
Okay. If if you if you kind enough to go back and look at the, you know, a recording, the video recording for the meeting that we had, you know, ever seen that you you and I on the council. You know, sometime that you present the the item fifteen minutes and twenty minutes and thirty minutes and people were sitting there and and listening to to you. Like last meeting, we were waiting, you know, your at least you presented at least thirty thirty minutes when you present the item of censoring Mayor Ta. And then we haven't got a chance, I've been waiting patiently to to have my chance. But then when Mayor Ta speak, you jump in and and, you know, it's just back and forth, back and forth. And then you have to take another like ten or fifteen minutes for yourself. You know, there you already took like forty five minutes or or an hour already. While I'm here waiting patiently to 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 get my chance. And when I speak, you know, I only get about five, not even five minutes speak. Then you guys jump in and and then stop. And then, you know, you used what they call a call for question. First of all, I have not got the chance to present myself. Now, if you say that I said you are lying, 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 okay? Well, think about it, have you ever say that before? Okay?
Here we are again.
It's it's fair that we are, you know, trying to defend ourselves or make make it clear that, you know, the the points that given across is not true. It can be done that way, but, you know, now if we have this policy set up, then, you know, each one of us have a lot of time frame. And, you know, even though if you want to say more, you can't. Okay, if you think that I I I am unreasonable, then this is applied to me too. And it apply to you and apply to the mayor and everyone in in the council. And I think it's fairly an equal time frame for every one of them. And give every one of us a chance to present ourselves.
Okay, so I I I really think that, I mean, like, I think that I think member from the public would like to see that at least. Because I know, I think you mentioned about a policy and they think that member from the public would like to see that we have the we even have a policy for ourselves. And I I think that, why don't we try it first? And I think that I took just all us at this and on a system. I mean, like, we not going to use like clock to time every member on the council every time he or she speaking. I think that this is on a system, but at least we have the policy in place. So the member of the public, they realize, okay, at the end of the day, you know, even all five us, we don't have to agree on any item. But at least we show the community that we have a good intention, that we even limited our time to be more focused, to have more effective discussion on the city matters. I think that is a good intention. Unless member city council have any other option, yes.
You know, unless other council member would like to speak, but I'd like to respond to it. I'm gonna wait for vice mayor or councilwoman Ho when I put the five cents in.
Just go real quick. I I get what councilmember Nguyen is trying to do and in a in a sense, it does make sense. But, you know, that I think that comes, that's the responsibility that we should be professional and courteous enough to not get into these kinds of conversations where we just go go around and around and around. And it's just like councilmember Nguyen said, just talking about the same thing over and over again. But when we have cases that come before us, when we need to, we have, you know, a lot of questions to ask of staff, a lot of deliberation to do with, you know, a really important projects in the community, not these these lately, these topics that we've been covering as far as, you know, miss council, you know, acting inappropriately. I don't want to have our city council be limited to to us to be, you know, be able to deliberate and ask quite good questions of, you know, really important projects that come before us. I think we need to just take the really do a real conscious effort to get back to being, you know, doing the work of the community, doing the work and really focus on and on the subjects that benefit all the community, not just some of these items that been before is that really doesn't do anything for the community as a whole. So I appreciate what you're trying to do, what councilman Nguyen is trying to do. But I don't think it's about limiting the speaking time. I think it's more about taking responsibility of ourselves and being professional and courteous to one to each other, you know, being respectful to each other. I think it's more about that and taking a look at ourselves. You know, so I think that's most important that we should be doing.
May I respond, meet the mayor?
Yeah, I'm done, go ahead.
Okay, I think that, Vice Mayor Manzo, I think that you miss, you either misunderstand of the purpose that I put out here or I may need to clarify for you, but I am more than happy to do that. I didn't say that we limit our terms for discussion. You, we can take all day, all night to discuss the 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 item if it's important enough for us. What I'm saying is, you know, given a time frame that you present yourself and let other people have the time to present themselves too. And if we can, if we think that this is the important issue, we can go on and go on and go on. That's number one. Number two, if you, you know, we went to one one route and, you know, the the other council listened to every one of us and then we have another, you know, we we have a great input that we want to put to 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 to, you know, discuss. Then, you know, a majority council or or this, you know, put up like call for question. And that person cannot have, you know, a chance to present themselves, even though they have a good idea. So what I'm saying is let them go for the second round and present themselves. And the majority council, whoever that is, want to call for question, then we can do after that. So, you know, I am not saying that every, you know, each council have only ten minutes and that's it. We cannot talk about it anymore. I think it's clear for you, right? Am I clear for you on that?
I get it, and I I always understood what you're trying to say, what you're trying to do, I get it. But I just want to make sure you understand that we cannot call for question until a few things. First, every council member has to have, has to have the be able to speak their time to speak, right? And then you cannot, and also you need to have a a motion and a second on the floor before the motion to call the question is can be done. So everybody, you know, already has the ability to, has to have the ability to to speak their mind before a call a question can be issued.
Exactly.
But I I appreciate it, no, I get it.
If I may make a comment, quick comment. You know, councilman Nguyen, I remember past council meeting, there was a couple of time that the call for question words were used. But it require a second to support that and a majority council vote to to carry that. So, but most of the time with that, the call for question was activated. The conversation usually, the dialogue from you usually is a personal attack and it kept repeating things again and again and again, nothing but personal. And that's why the call for question words were used to end that kind of nonsense discussions. You know, it 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 required a majority to approve it. And I think if the majority believe that it's not necessary to have that kind of dialogue, I think that the the council reserve the right to use it to to end nonsense so that we can go forward. And even though the 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 call question we use several time, the mayor disregard that and continues to allow you to to talk. And most of the time, it's a personal attack, it's very unfortunate. You know, the count, for the council to have such an experience, mayor disregard the rule of procedure and allow that to happen. So, I was, you know, so I I totally understand what you're trying to say and I appreciate that. But the call question never used to shut you off? If you focus, if we focus on the item we're discussing in a very professional level, then I I guarantee I'll be the first one to jump in and say, no. We will not call for question and we will allow the person to, excuse me, continue to speak. Thank you.
To respond to that, I invite you to go ahead and go back and.
That's all, we're just, we're doing it again, we're doing it again. Can we, do we have a motion and a second or what are we doing?
Yeah, I I I I moved to approve, you know, as recommended to have ordinance for the time limit, you know, just like what is in the recommendation recommended by recommended action.
Something similar to the the Oceanside ordinance is what you're proposing?
No, no, the Oceanside is giving a limit of ten minutes and and after ten minutes, no, no more, you know. For for this proposal, I was thinking that, you know, if the like Vice Mayor Manzo already mentioned, you know, if the item is important enough, which we need more time to discuss, we continue to do that. You know, there's no limit on that. But I would like to have, you know, each council have the chance to input their their, you know, to give their input and also opinions before that we can move on. You know, and if we need more time, by all means, you know, we can always discuss about it all night if need to, to to reach the 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 decision that benefit the community, benefit, you know, the 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 city.
Okay, so if I could summarize what I I think you're saying there is that and I think was mentioned would be that in a first round, there'd be five minutes and that the mayor would offer a second round. If the council wants to conduct that second round, they will for another five minutes. But at that point, as a general rule, they try to stop discussion. But if the council keep going, they have that discretion to keep going and discussing the item. Would that be correct?
Right, at the same time, I I I just want to make sure that you noted that, you know, call for question cannot be made before the second round.
Before the end of the second round?
Before the end of the second round, thank you very much.
So could actually add to that, because I because I see the discretion when it's discretionary as far as if an item is important or not important. I feel like you're gonna have an argument over that because that's, you know, that can be quite subjective. Would it, you know, would it be something you're interested in that if you wanted to make, you know, wanted to give additional time or give a lengthy discussion, that maybe you vote on that?
A motion to continue discussion.
A mo like, or yeah, basically a motion to allow continuing, you know, the discussion. That way, that because I, that way, it's it's not open ended. And you just know that you have to do it.
It could be, it could be done that way or it could be done informally as well. You could just by consensus agree that discussion should go on, it could be done either way.
Yeah, may I respond to that? I think that, you know, it's not necessary to have that because, you know, at that point, if the council, majority council or whoever wants to, you know, to make a motion of, you know, we have enough discussion and this is a time that we call for question. You know, I I I believe that, you know, each one of us have the right to do that and and, you know, enough is enough and we can always call for for question.
Okay, we have a motion then. Do we have a second?
Yes, I seconded motion.
Councilmember Doe?
You know, I will vote no because I I I don't think that we, you know, like the vice mayor mentioned, that call for question will not be made unless there's a motion that the second on the floor and after everybody have at least twice volley of of discussions, a chance to speak. So, and and I have never seen any anyone who were trying to make the argument professionally to convince a college to support their agenda item been shut down. You know, not not, at least not lately. So I don't think we need to have that. As long as we have a professional, responsible and logical argument point to make. And I I I cannot see anyone on the scan, so we'll make a call for motion, so my votes are no.
Councilmember Ho?
Well, this item is rather, to me, it's rather weird because we already have a tool. And that tool is we use the, you know, motion and the second and call for question, that works fine. I think for five minutes, if you spend your five minutes hickering and yelling and and saying crap and things like that, then, you know, five minutes is way too long. But, you know, five minutes would be way too short if you really are on an agenda and your focus is on the agenda. Then I I I would not want to be limited to just five minutes. So my vote is no.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, I I believe that, you know, the the suggestion is five minutes. And if we want to go more, we can always go more, it's just a reason for, you know, for the majority council to to think it, you know, I I I try to be effective, I try to be fair and I try to be, you know, you know, like council always said that, you know, we need to have policy, you know, in place. And now here we present a policy which, you know, you know, they said, oh, it's a good item, it's a good item, but at the end of the day, they said no. So my my vote is yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
No.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion failed three two with councilmember Doe, councilmember Ho and Vice Mayor Manzo voting no.
All right, next item, five point four, consideration of resolution of Shengshou, may I?
I'd like to read it on on record, just the, just the resolution part of it. Okay, the resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Westminster censoring Mayor Tretar for unacceptable conduct. Whereas the city's council, the city Westminster, has a duty to the resident of Westminster to ensure that state and federal laws and the rules, regulations, policy of the city of Westminster are followed by all members of the city council. policy of the city of Westminster are followed by all members of the city council. And that member of the city council demonstrate the highest level of professionalism and respect while acting in the course and scope of their office and West, the ethics policy adopted by the city of Westminster City Council on May twenty second, twenty nineteen requires each council member to affirm that they, quote, understand that the citizen of Westminster expecting me to serve with dignity and respect and to be an agent of the democratic process, excuse me, will treat other public officials and members of city staff and the city public with respect, patience, courtesy and civility, even when I disagree with the opinion that they have expressed. Will be honest with other public official, city staff and the public and will take responsibility for the action, even when it might be uncomfortable to do so, unquote. Whereas complaint we recently made by another member of city council asserting that Mayor Tretia have violated the city council ethic policy by failing to treat all public official with respect, patience, courtesy and civility and being honest with other public official, city staff and the public. And whereas at January twelve, twenty twenty two, the city council meeting, the city council agenda and item to discuss and consider at length, the statement unless to have been made by Mayor Tretia and decide whether a resolution of censure should be prepared and whereas during the discussing of that item, excuse me, the city council duly consider the evidence and comments presented by another member of city council as well as the comments and responses made by Mayor Tretia and public comments and whereas at the conclusion of discussion of the city council voted to proceed with the preparation of a resolution of a censure and whereas the city council had determined that Mayor Tretia's violation of the city's ethics policy as more particularly set forth below have brought this disrepute to the city of city of Westminster and whereas the city council does not condone or approve this type of conduct and behavior and finds it necessary and prudent to declare a strong disapproval of such conduct and whereas the city council further determine that adoption of this revolution, resolution is necessary to affirm that such conduct will not be tolerated and to prevent such conduct from being repeated. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Westminster does hereby result as follow. Section one, the city council finds that this recital set before, that set above are true and correct. Section two, the city council finds that Mayor Tretia engage in the following conduct in violation of the city of Westminster ethic policies, which require council member to treat all public official with respect, patience, courtesy, civility and to be honest with other public official, city staff and the public. Mayor Tretia has been using the Vietnamese language media to claim that a majority of the city council kicked him out of his office and he is officially, quote unquote, officeless. The council find that this, that this statement is not true, the mayor was never kicked out of of his office. The council adopt this general, generally applicable policy, government, council and employee in action that is applicable to all council members equally and in an attempt to protect city staff member from improper city council influence. No particular council member, council member was ever targeted in any way and no specific order will issue that the mayor or any other council member be kicked out of their office. To the contrary, the council has made it clear on more than one occasion that Mayor Tretia should be allowed to remain in his office at least until the end of his current term. So it was entirely improper to make the statement the mayor's make in the media and otherwise. On October twenty four, twenty twenty one, Mayor Tretia and Vice Mayor, then my Vice Mayor Chi Chalinhun were interviewed by blocker Kino. By message, Chi Chalinhun, make a statement that council member Sa Tito, council member Kimberly Ho and council member Kalop Menzo intentionally and maliciously took the right of contacting the city department heads away from Mayor Tretia and council member Chi Chalinhun, knowing that this statement was completely false. The council had discussion to try and determine when it was appropriate for all council members to contact city staff and determine they should only contact them in limited circumstances when it was necessary to obtain information and should not order city staff to do anything. All directions should come through the city manager and set forth in state law. There was nothing in the city council discussion that targeted these rule only to the mayor and Vice Mayor Chi Chalinhun. The fault, these false statement once again appeared to be a calling for support to the recall effort, council member Kalop Menzo and a council member Kimberly Ho. There's a YouTube link included, but it's, this particular video was taken offline, it's not available. See, on October twenty nine, twenty twenty one, on a YouTube interview with blocker Trung Wokhui and two other blockers who are big supporter of Mayor Tretia. Mayor Tretia claimed that he got kicked out of his office, Mayor Tretia calmly listened to other blockers expressing their opposition to this council decision, Mayor Tretia once again objected to being kicked out of his office effective immediately and he then went on to and called for the voters to take action against council member Kimberly Ho, council member Tito and Vice Mayor. On November first, twenty twenty one, Mayor Tretia appear on a Vietnamese television channel as the mayor and politely asserted that the a majority of the city council has conspired, attacked and kicked Mayor Tretia out of his office in city hall. Mayor Tretia went on and accused the majority of the city council of doing this because of a personal vendetta. These statements are false and defamatory, because no discussion of action has been taken to actually remove the mayor from his current office of city hall. The mayor still occupies the same office to this day and the item in this unquestionably talk about council member offices, generally not the mayor. The mayor Tretia went on and make a statement called the Westminster resident respond appropriately and correctly, which implied that the people should sign the recall petition against council member Kimberly Ho and Vice Mayor Kalop Menzo. On November sixth, twenty twenty one, in the YouTube video titled in Vietnamese, is the communist attacking California? Westminster mayor got kicked out of his office. Mayor Tretia again stated that it was unprecedented that he was kicked out of his office and he has no office within which to serve as a mayor. This is an childish act, dictatorship and personal vendetta. Mayor Tretia explained the recall process and called the voter to sign the recall petition to recall council member Kimberly Ho and Vice Mayor Kalop Menzo. When asked if Mayor Tretia has been moved out of his office, Mayor Tretia could not keep a straight face and responded in Vietnamese, legally, I don't know where is my office. Council voted to not let me sit in my office and it's effective immediately. They clearly voted on October twenty seven, twenty one, and clearly I have no office. I'm not sure what to do with my personal belongings in my office and make an irresponsible decision, was that no planning for my new office. Mayor Tretia went on to praise the blocker for his influence in Westminster and he asked for the voter to sign the recall petition. On November second, twenty twenty one, in an interview with a YouTube blocker, we did, Mayor Tretia say it was unprecedented, it was kicked out of his office by council member Kimberly Ho, Tito and Kalop Menzo, who did so because of personal vendetta and dictatorship. Mayor Tretia claimed that he has no office from which to serve as the mayor. Then the Vice Mayor Chi Chalinhun make a statement attacking the city council for kicking the mayor out of city hall. He stated that Mayor Tretia currently does not have an office. He further stated that if any resident want to meet with Mayor Tretia, they should contact it by phone so that it could set up an appointment to meet Mayor Tretia at various intersection, parking lot, coffee shop in the city. Because Mayor Tretia has no office in city hall. He said that voter cannot meet him at city hall. Why, the mayor, then the Vice Mayor Chi Chalinhun dumped it down on the false statement when he stated in Vietnamese. That mean that's an issue involving the mayor's office, it happened, has been happening. Vice Chi Chalinhun also stated in Vietnamese that Mayor Tretia currently has no office. The mayor continued to serve the public selflessly when they need his help. Mayor Tretia and Vice Mayor Chi Chalinhun went on to reaffirm his call for people to sign petition of council member Kimberly Ho, council member Kalop Menzo. On December fifth, twenty twenty one, Mayor Tretia met with a group Save Westminster, which is an organization trying to collect signature to recall council members, Kimberly Ho and Vice Mayor Kalop Menzo, a member of the group in an effort to motivate a voter to sign the recall petition, asked Mayor Tretia a leading question about the mayor's claims that he has been kicked out of his office and officially, quote unquote, officeless. Mayor Tretia responded by once again reinforcing the idea that he has no office and he was unable to serve the public. As a result of his remark, several residents expressed opposition to several member of this Westminster city council. On December ten, twenty twenty one, Mayor Tretia appear on a YouTube livestream with blogger Ngoc Hi, excuse me. It was, who was driving around a white SUV, which he say was a mayor's mobile's office. Since he claimed to the community that mayor has been kicked out of his office and he has no office to which to serve as a mayor, this appeared to be a calling for support to recall efforts of Vice Mayor Kalos Manzo and Councilmember Kimberly Ho. Mayor Tretia in several city council meeting has allowed council member Chi Chalinhun to be repeatedly argumentative and descriptive during council meeting, allowing him to interrupt all the council members when they have the floor to speak. On more than one occasion, council member Nguyen responded by saying craps when another council member had to make a comment about the agenda item he disagreed with. Section three, the city council finds that above statement by Mayor Tretia were untrue and and his conduct in this manner was improper, unprofessional and unacceptable and constitute a violation of the city ethics policy. The council finds that Mayor Tretia were acting as an individual when he engaged in his conduct and was acting without and or any authorization or ratification by the city council and contrary to the legitimate interest of the city. Section four, the council also state that Mayor Tretia has repeatedly allowed council member Chi Chalinhun to be argumentative and descriptive during the council meeting, allowing him to willfully interrupt other council member when they have the floor to speak and by not reprimanding him when he repeatedly responded to other council member by saying craps. Section five, the city council hereby censure Mayor Tretia for the conduct described herein and expresses the strongest possible disapproval and disavow thereof. Section six, going forward, the city council respectfully but earnestly requests and expect Mayor Tretia to cease and exist from any further improper and unprofessional conduct toward other city council members. Section seven, the mayors are shy as to the passive approval and adoption of this resolution. Section eight, interim city class shall certify and pass and adoption of this resolution and shall fix the signature, the city seal and the same shall be entered into the book of resolution. Thank you for your patience.
All right, so have you done right, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Okay. I have to repeat again that I feel really, really sorry for the resident who elected you almost four years ago. I mean, like, I couldn't believe it, you know, the language in the resolution completely irrational and irresponsible. I mean, like, you could not stay the fact, the fact that, I mean, I I don't know how many times I have to repeat. October twenty seven, majority of the city council, you vote on my office want to be separate from the city hall. And I remember, I I still remember for one interview when council member Menzo interview to one of the YouTube channel and he confirmed that, you know, the intention of majority of the city council that separate my physical office from the city hall. I, and I think that's it a fact, and I think that we all read that, I mean, that we all realize, we all aware that that when the majority of the city council, you have that action, does mean that that action will be effective right way. And October twenty seven, majority of the city council did vote to separate my office from the city hall. And with that action, I have my right to state a fact and to explain to the committee, you repeatedly, you know, said that I asked the committee to sign a recall, I never did that and I mean, I I I really want to ask you to go back all the channel, all the YouTube channel, you know, and show to the public where I asked member to sign on a recall. I never done that, it's up to the will of the community. And I mean, like, the language in the resolution completely wrong, completely irrational, doesn't make any sense. I never violate anything and for the person who initiated the resolution, especially come from you, Councilmember Doe, I mean, like, the community, they, I think they understand all of us. We've been on a council, the way we talk, the way we behave out there. I think the member of the community, they all know. Each of us, even even though we try to, you know, accuse each other in in a council meeting, it does not really help. I think that, you know, the language in the resolution, I do not agree, it's really irrational. You know, in my life, I I never come up with any resolution to do any censure, even in the past. You know, some of the members of the city council accuse each other and, you know, we all heard from member from the public. They kind of really, really tired of all of us being fighting, you know, really waste our time for one irrational resolution like this, hey, you have majority, okay, you can do whatever you want. But I mean, like, the language in the resolution even give me more time to state a fact, to explain to the public, to explain to the committee. I think the committee, they understand, they can, and I believe in a committee, I believe in a resident in our city. So I don't see that the language in your resolution could able to to able to state a fact, because the fact is, if you want me to remind you all that last meeting, you came up with an action to allow me, allow me to stay in my office until the, until remaining of my term. If you did not vote to separate my office from the city hall, so how could you have to revote again, have to decide again to allow me to stay in my office until the end of my term? I mean, you really conflicted yourself, go back to the last meeting and with the minute. I mean, I couldn't believe it, you did vote to separate my office from the city hall on October twenty seven and last meeting. Because because of a lot of concern, complaint, you know, upset from the community, that's why you have to revote again to allow me to stay in my office until the, the end of my term. On October twenty seven, you did not come up any plan that where my office going to be after you vote to separate my office from the city hall. And that is a fact, I always report to the committee based on what you vote in the meeting. And we all know that when the majority of the city council, when you vote, it will be effective right way for the next day. And October twenty seven, there no direction whatsoever, there's no plan that what my office going to be. So what, what you expect me to explain to the committee? What you expect me to explain, you know, to the committee and I mean, that kind of behavior never happened before, you know, in the city of Westminster. If you want to remove me from the, from the city hall, that's fine. But at least come up with a plan, where my outfit going to be? On October twenty fourth, October twenty seven, as I recall correctly, there was no direction, there was no plan whatsoever where my outfit There was no plan whatsoever where my office going to be. So what you, so what do you expect me to, uh, accept in the community? You, so you want me to like, uh, sit there and allow you to continue to, uh, attacking me, to single me out, or to like, um, continue to, uh, uh, put me in a limbo situation, okay? My office going to be, my office already be vote to separate from the city hall. At the same time, I have nowhere to go. So I mean, like, the, you, I think that you been doing that, you know, majority of the city council being like, come up with irrational language, completely not professional. And I, of course, I do not agree that. I think that, I think give me the, your resolution even, even give me more reason to continue to state a fact to the community, and I think I, I continue to do so. Because, you know, that's a fact. Last meeting, you vote, you decide because of the pressure from the community, I don't know, but because your concerns or because a lot of community kind of upset member in the community get upset. That's why you revote again to allow me to stay in my office until the end of my term. Yep.
You know, um,
Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Trichat, thank you Vice Mayor, uh, I appreciate it. Let me finish my transcript real quick. Um, you know, um, it's just, uh, it's just devastating for me just to look, look at you as a first Vietnamese mayor, it's, uh, Westminster. And you continue to, um, you know, shamelessly deny this is what happened with all the evidence I presented. You know, uh, i- is that your legacy? Is that what you want to remember as a, as a mayor who, uh, uh, use Vietnamese, the mandatong, the Vietnamese language to express fake news to the community? To lie to them, to those who trusted you, voted for you, and use that to advance your political career? You know, I, I, I think, I think with the SBA ninety five, you know, the historian, they're gonna put down the history book of as what happened here in the city Westminster and you and Councilmember Chi Chauvin Nguyen, uh, will be, uh, put down history book as the one who use the uh, Vietnamese language and to, um, to lie to the, to spread the fake news, to lie to the voter. You know, you say, you say very obvious, you don't care about the rest of the city. Okay, because you can trust that the Vietnamese American voter who, who, who vote and the elderly who doesn't speak any, uh, unable to understand English, uh, will continue to vote for you because they don't care. Now listen, let's stick, listen to you, what you're saying, because nobody be able to understand what you're saying Vietnamese. And you could continue to do this, you are not gonna stop. That's what exactly what you're saying. You know, because fake news in, 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 in now, in our community, destroying our community, separate our community. It divided our community, us versus them. Okay, it's, it's angry a lot of people and everyone look at that, the city council, you know, why uh, you and Councilman Chi Chauvin Nguyen was so like disregard for the rest of the, um, the voter, because you don't care. You only focus to the Vietnamese American who unable to speak the English, because those are your voter. You will continue to get reelected, and that's what you focusing, you disregard the rest of the pack. And that's why I advise, uh, um, Council, Chi Chauvin Nguyen continue to your speaker and, 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 and personally attack and attack and attack and attack. It's just relentless. No, I'm so sorry to the, um, the resident of the city. You know, that you have to witness this, but this is a necessary battle that we have to deal with. Because this is something the goal we, we need to suffer, so nobody seeing it, and it devastating our community. It separate us, it dividing us, us versus them. Okay, nobody care about the rest of the city, except the focus is right, get the vote, fool the voter and make them continue voting for this, uh, elective first on this, uh, governing body. And this have to stop. God, you know what? It's, it's, it's just, it's just painful to see this is what going on. And, and you continue to have that stone face and totally disregard that you were right. You know, whereas you, you go out there, it's been the past couple of months, drumming up that I got kicked out of my office, I have no office, calling people to, from all over, the Vietnamese American across the country to support you, to help you, to save you. And you know what? It's devastating. A lot of your supporter, the elderly, and this have to stop. This have to stop. It's not too late. Your legacy still can be saved if you stop this. And taking care of business and, and, and taking care of everybody in the city, not just the Vietnamese American. Thank you.
So thank you, Madel.
Okay, Vice Mayor, okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, like I said before, I want to keep it short. This is a bunch of unnecessary drama, but it does need to happen. Um, like I said before, on last meeting, uh, you know, what's going on in our country, you know, there's a lot of, as you, as you may know, a lot of, you know, you know, hate out there and, and our country is divided, you know, politically and, and a lot, uh, with this pandemic, a lot of tensions are, you know, high and, you know, we had a lot of anti-Asian hate crimes happening. I mean, it's been happening, it's bad, and it may not be dangerous for you, but for, for your supporters that you know very well, uh, calling me racist, that I'm, and then I'm gonna tear down this statue that I approved when I was in the planning commission. You know, you, like I said before, you can't guarantee that residents not gonna take that too hard and get angry at me and attack me when they, if they see me in public, and, you know. You know, I think, like I said before, I think we all have a responsibility to make sure that if something misinformation is being out there, that we correct it. We had to have our city interim city manager put out a statement stating the fact that we had, the city does not have any authority to tear down any, uh, statue that's on private property. You know, that's very responsible for, for, um, I know you know those bloggers well, because I've seen you on videos with them, so you could have done the responsible thing as an, as a, as a pretty much the head of the, of this council and the head of the, of the city to correct that misinformation, and you didn't. You know, and it puts me in harm. I know you don't like me, you never even congratulated me when I won election, but it puts me in, in harm's way. You know, that's, you may not care about that, but I do. You know, that's very responsible, and it's just, this ugliness that's been happening here in our city is just tearing, you know, making the rest of the community that's, uh, you know, the non-Vietnamese members of the community just kind of feel like they're, they're left out, and we have all this drama going on and the, you know, I, I got kind of thrown into this because of what's going on, you know, and the council and, and and, um, in the Vietnamese community, I see that there's a, there's a divide there that I've seen grow over the years, sitting on the sidelines. You know, from way back when, you know, years ago. And, uh, now, I'm, I'm, I'm thrown in the middle because Councilmember Ho chose not to vote for some of your pet projects, and now, now I'm a target. I'm a target because of that. If she, if Councilmember Ho net, if would voted for some of your pet projects, nobody would care about me or care about Councilmember Do. But, you know, that's not fair that you targeted me just because of you didn't get your way on your pet projects and this, tearing our city apart, tearing our city apart. We need to get back, put the focus on the community, get away from all this, all these pet projects and personal vendettas that's going on. So, that's it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, can I, um, say my thoughts?
Please, okay.
Councilmember Do, that's, that was exactly why I brought up the item five point three. So that we can have the equal time frame and talk about it. Do you see exactly what happened here? You have ten minutes or even fifteen minutes to present yourself. Then after the mayor speak, then you jump in again for another ten minutes or more. Don't you think that we have comment to say and share with the council? Of course we do. But do you care? No. All I say is be considerate to other members of your council, the council members here. You know, I said, I, I said this before, and I say it again, that your allegations are purely accusations. I'm sick and tired of your nonsense allegations. Are you only good at censoring your college? Who is next, who is next on your list? Where were you at the strategy meeting last Monday? We know that it was an important meeting to set goals for the next six months. Oh, probably that was not important to you. No surprise to me. All you want is to spend time to, to talk about censoring people, this and that, but you know.
Can we, can we talk about the issue right now?
You've been talking a lot of nonsense and, and I listened to it. Let me finish my. I know staff coordinate this important meeting almost a month ago and ask for your availability as well.
Wait, 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 let's just talk about what we have right now.
Please, please. Not, not only that you did not.
This is exactly what we're talking about.
But he is making point, please. I want to make my points. Not only that you did not join the meeting, but no.
Talk about what you lie on the community. Talk about all the videotape we have.
The other council member speak. When you speak, we all listen.
I understand, but it, it's not the ethnic to do with the agenda.
Person speak.
Wha- what about the agenda? Talk about the agenda right now.
No substantial.
Speaking about agenda.
What, what you are saying there is no substantial evidence whatsoever. Not even one, not even one to back you, uh, to back it up. So the verbiage that you put together to censor me or mayor means nothing to us. I stated the facts and speaking up the truth, nothing to be ashamed of. I'm proudly to do so and will continue to speak out the truth. And the truth that I was just mentioned, you know, how, how are you, um, caring for this, uh, community? Okay, to your participation and non-participation in term of discussing about the item, you know, important items for, to set goal for the next six months. You know, your three behaviors are unacceptable. You three go ahead and vote to censor us to satisfy yourself. The community know about it, and they will respond appropriately. And I, I'm sure that will, will be next, you know, soon we will see that. Don't have to wait for long. That's it, my, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, you know, as for me, I made my statements last time, and, um, again, I just want to briefly, you know, um, remind, you know, I, I just want to make a very brief statement about this is that, you know, the mayor, mayor, you, you continue to manipulate the public with your words. You know, I'm being on the council force for about seventeen years. You know that when a resolution, um, begins, even if it's, you know, starts today, it doesn't mean that it is, it begins immediately when you said, and it's effective right away. That's absurd. So you know that isn't true, but you still said it, and you said it again tonight, which doesn't make sense for coming from a seventeen-year veteran on the council. And, um, you know, when we made the decision October twenty seventh, where we, we would have to go through a process. And so I don't wanna, you already know the truth. You know the truth, you just don't want to say the truth. You don't want to tell the truth, and that's the problem, and you still deny, uh, and still, um, continue to want to say, uh, you still want to receive the public. And you, I know, you know, you'd rather run around with your YouTubers, uh, to badmouth me and others. Um, and you will continue to, to tell your lies, but I just hope you can live with yourself, find it in your heart to, you know, um, turn yourself around. I really don't think this is the way for a, a sitting mayor or even a former mayor to behave. Um, you know, I, I believe, um, you know, I supported you for four or five years. Um, you know, when I got on the council, you know, our parents knew each other, and my parents supported your parents and therefore supported you, and so I continued that trend. But I continue to see your bad behavior and that you just, you know, let those who, um, you know, those who manipulate you and control your actions and being this, the sixth wheel, the seventh wheel on this council to control your, your every move. And, uh, some of the very, very bad decisions that you want to make that I had to block with my, with my vote and I, and, you know, I continue to support you if you would just, you know, do good things. And, you, you know, and, and I just ask that you don't manipulate the public. I know there are Vietnamese, uh, speaking mostly elderly, and they look up to you, they love you, they continue to support you. And I know no matter what we say today, they're gonna continue to, uh, listen to you. And so, you know, that, that, that comes with an obligation. So I, I, I think you need to find within your heart to say the truth. And, you know, stop this great divide, and you tell the lie like that, and you, uh, cast judgment upon us, the things that we did not do. Um, and, you know, you know the intention, the intention is you're not the target. When we talk about your seat, we talk about your, your office, we're not targeting you specifically. But in general, we have to make plans for any, whether it be, we, you know, whether it's gonna be affecting you or any future mayors that's gonna come on, on board. Um, we were gonna make that decision as a council, nothing personal. But you made it personal. You made it clear to the people that we were, we had some personal vendetta. So that's very unprofessional. So at, at the minimum, it's unprofessional. So, um, for me, I, I would say it's just unacceptable conduct, and I, you know, like I said, I'm just asking that if we could just focus on the good things that we do on, on this council, there's so much more to be done. You just need to move past this and just acknowledge what is written here in the resolution and, you know, stop telling all these lies and, and, you know, turn yourself around so that we, we, we don't do more damage, and because like, you know, as the councilman Don mentioned that, you know, your legacy, do you not care about your legacy, you know? Um, I think you should, because being the first mayor, and I've always said, I've always supported your seat, I've always respected your seat, and I've reminded you that, you know, you are the first mayor, the Vietnamese, uh, Vietnamese mayor in the whole country. And so I said, you know, that comes with, with responsibility. So there are people who are out there, you know, they look up to you, and they love you, they want to see you do good work. So, I'm not gonna say more about that. We've already spoken last time.
Alright, so, uh, Councilmember Ho, uh, I have to say that I do not agree whatever you said. I mean, like, I don't want to repeat again that how many time you appear on the Vietnamese-speaking channel and you spread out a lot of news, totally not based on the fact, but based, based on your emotion, and I think you know that. And I'm not appreciate that you tried to mention that you care for my legacy. I mean, like, even you try to, uh, be a good actress. No one would to believe that in our community. Hey, more than welcome to say whatever, but it is not.
No one would to believe that in our community. Hey, more than welcome to say whatever, but it is not true. I stay the fact. I would be appreciate if on October twenty seven, majority of the city council. After you vote to separate my office, at least you come up with a plan, hey. I think that, you know, we need to move the mayor to like that office. Okay, that area, that building have like a vacant office. But you have to agree with me that there was no plan, there was no direction and staff. I mean, like, I'm really nervous. Didn't know what to do. And you know, we left that, you know, like going on like a few months and for the last meeting. Because the community, they raised a lot of concerns. So you came up with a direction that, okay, I'm allowed to stay in my office until the end of the term. So, I mean, like, well, I couldn't believe it. Okay, if you said that you didn't, you didn't vote me out of the office, my physical office. So how come you have to? Have, have to vote again that, okay, I'm allowed to stay in my office until the end of, to the end of my term. That's a fact. I mean, like, you can say whatever you want here, but I think the community, they know. And please don't try to acting up. How many, how many times that you try to accuse me on the Vietnamese speaking channel? With a lot of irrational uh issue. And now you all said that you do care for my legacy. I don't believe that and none of the member from the community believe that. Hey, but. Because you have the vote, go ahead and do it. But don't try to acting like you are trying to focus on the city. You, you are willing, you are willing to spend hour to come up with the resolution to. Censoring me and Councilmember, Councilmember Win, rather than. You know, spend more time to discuss many other item on agenda. The member of council, the member of the public, they saw that and they witnessed that. How many time, many, many, many item on the channel are really, really important. But I rarely see member of the council willing to spend time to dig into it, to ask a lot of question. But you are willing to spend like hour, hour of resolution. Censoring Councilmember Win and myself, okay, but. I know that you have the vote and you know, it's not surprising, it's not surprising me, you have the vote, do whatever you want. But that will not stop myself and Councilmember Win continue to tell the truth, continue to state a fact. Hey, the community, they have their choice. Every time we state a fact, we tell the truth. We have their support, we're not spreading out any lie, so don't try to put something into our mouth. No, that's a fact.
Honorable that, um, that, um, that you allow your supporters to spread, so you're saying that. It was true? What, that I was trying to knock down a statue?
I never said that.
No, I didn't say that, that I'm asking you, did you stop your, your supporters from, from that, from spreading those lies?
I never encourage my supporter.
No, that's not what I said. I'm asking you, did you, did you stop them from saying that?
Hey, if they ask me, I will tell them the, the truth.
If they ask you, you're standing right there.
Yeah, they, they, you know, you get newspaper, left you a message to, just to clarify if you. If it, um, the allegation that council, um, members, uh, Kimberly Ho and Vice Mayor Kalomenzel. Was going to destroy those statue and those uh, um, monument now in the Freedom Park. And you, you know, they say that you never respond to the voicemail. And then, you know, it's just a shame, it's a shame as a leader, as elected mayor in the city and you allow all these. Negative, um, fake news attacking, um. Um, Vice Mayor Manzo especially making allegation that's a racist. I've been on, on the Vietnamese media and saying that it's not true. It's, it's a lie that, uh, they, they tried to, they tried to frame. Uh, Vice Mayor Kalomenzel was a racist and it's, 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 it's dangerous, it put. Uh, him and his family at risk of being attacked because, uh, you know, your, your supporter. Uh, calling him a racist and you never once, you and, um, and Councilmember Charlie Win, never once speak up against that. And, and then, and, and as, as a, as a, as a leader, as an elective official, you have that duty and responsibility. To, uh, to respond the fake news and you did not do that and that's, that's shameful.
So that's not, I'm saying, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Doe. But that's not in my book, it's not very honorable, that's not honorable.
Very briefly, we're at midnight.
Yeah, yeah, we need to.
We have a rule to either stop or vote to continue.
Well, let's finish.
I have one more to, to say, you know, just short and, 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 uh, you know. You know, it, it, it is very, very a shame for the council member ignoring a strategic meeting. We check the ideas of discussing the safety plan to address the, our community during this pandemic. You know, uh, the spike of, of, you know, uh, defected COVID nineteen. Citing that they do not have times to discuss about it. But here we are, spent hours to talk about censoring other council members. And that, and, and, and it's sad to have another council member thinking at the same thing, you know, to. Saying that there is no uh time to discuss about the plan or, or anything. Especially, I'm asking for update, we can't even do that. So anyway, that's it.
Move to approve.
Uh, uh, there was.
Second, second.
Alright, we have a motion on the second floor.
That motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo and second by Councilmember Doe. So Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? You're muted.
Yes.
Councilmember Win?
No, no, no.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
No.
That motion carried three, two with Councilmember Nguyen and Mayor Ta voting no.
Alright, next item, consideration of adoption of resolution modifying of.
Actually, sorry, it's, so it's midnight, so you have to do the adoption of the, if you wanna, you know, continue.
Um, move to finish this item.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion on the second to continue, continue the meeting over midnight, after midnight.
I, say I.
Remember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No. Vice Mayor Monzo? Wait, wait, wait a minute, say, say, uh, we are voting for continue, yes.
Wait, are.
Okay.
My vote is yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five, zero to continue.
Alright, so with that, we have item, uh, six point one. I don't know if staff wanted to give us a report or something.
Um, would you like me to, do you want me to?
It's probably easier since you, um, requested it for you to start.
Yeah, I just, um, don't want to take people's time, take up too much time.
No worries.
So, um, six point one is, um. Is to request to modify the approval process for finding a, a public convenience or necessity. And to consider adoption of a resolution entitled. The resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster rescinding and replacing the resolution number fifty forty. Establishing the appropriate decision making authority regarding determinations of public convenience. Or necessity as required by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. Okay, so. I would just, um. Do, uh, I, I, you know, I just wanna say that, um, okay, so briefly, in, um, in nineteen ninety four. Uh. And I'd say before nineteen ninety four, up to nineteen ninety four, um. The, the, um, we have always had, um. Okay, so, okay, so I'm just gonna say briefly what I'm gonna say first and then if there's any clarification, we can, we can go back. So, um, the reason I brought this up is because. I understand that certain council members conspired to put pressure on former. City manager to change our resolution that existed since the adoption of resolution thirty three. Oh, four in nineteen ninety six to benefit their friend and donor. So that was adopted last May. Um, for me, I always, you know, it was put on, um, the agenda by the CM himself. And so, um, of course, there was mentioning that, yes, I did give it the vote, um, but of course, based on. You know, um, what he presented and so, you know, it's very important that we trust the words of our city manager. Um, and, um, so I'd like to continue to trust the words of our city manager and always looking, hopefully that. She's always looking out for our city. So. So basically, this resolution designated the planning commission as the approval, the approval. Approving body for granting a CUP as well as the PC, as the PCN, and that was nineteen ninety six. Um, um, and then, that basically. The, the PCN, you know, the current, the current state law limits the issuance of the, of new licenses in geographical regions. That are defined as high crime areas of undue concentration of retail alcohol outlets. So ABC in nineteen ninety four provides local jurisdictions with the opportunity to override. This restriction in certain situations. So we as a council gave the jurisdiction to the planning commission to determine both the CUP. As well as the PCN, but somehow it was orchestrated to help certain donor to receive this PCN. So the pressure was put on the former city manager to make that decision. So, uh, you know, when I, I mean, I have, um. So when I. When I did some research, um, you know, I realized that, you know, number one, it, it really. Is a, a big liability bestowed on just one person and, and that is the city manager. Um, and it's so, it, it, it also makes it. You know, very easy to, to manipulate the system by putting the pressure on just that one person. And so that's gonna lead to more frauds and more corruptions. So of course I'd have to put a stop to that and I have to, I would like to tonight for us to reverse that. So again, let me say, this past May, it was changed. Prior to that. Um, the planning commission had the jurisdiction over. Both the CUP as well as the PCN. Now, um. Tonight, I propose that we, we take the opportunity to, to make, to make it better. In that we still give it to the planning commission, uh, the jurisdiction over the CUP as well as the PCN. But for those who already have the CUP and for those who already possess, uh, the ABC license. Um, and they, and that means that they don't need to go through the CUP. And for instance, a name change, if the owner wants to sell his, um. His, uh, business and just wants to change the name or of the applicant. Um, of the owner, change in ownership, then they should go, they could still go through. An AUP, meaning it could still be, um. Uh, we can still give the authority to the city manager. Um, to make that decision because it's not a new applicant. So. Um, I hope I answered everybody's questions, uh, but if you still have questions, please, um. You know, ask me, um. But I want to go back and say this. For the particular case that I was talking about. And like I said, I bring certain issues up because I, I feel that we need to have things done differently. Or in this case, we have to reverse. Um, the, you know, the resolution that we had approved back in May. Um, if not, uh, we could be in a lot of trouble. Um, and, but one thing I just want to let you know is that, um. With the PCN, so, so ABC approves or the, the ABC. Wants our city to approve the PCN. Uh, and, and again, PCN is. Yeah, so for instance, if the census tract is saturated. Um, they don't want responsibility, so in this case, census tract was six and it was already saturated. And this person is gonna be the seventh, uh, the seventh person, the seventh license. Then not only that, but not only that, it was in a, um, high crime area. So ABC does not know and does not gonna, wouldn't take the responsibility to approve. Um, a PCN, uh, for high crime and overly saturated, um, region. So that's the reason why we, 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 we have our candidate, our applicants go through the whole. Planning process and combine both. You know, they can get both their PCN and CUP approved at the same time and that's the way it should be. Okay? So when this was, the CUP was still, so back in May last year, it was split up. CUP was approved by the, uh, planning commission, but the PCN. Uh, was to be approved by the city, uh, manager. I, I just don't think that is, that is good at all, because when they go through the planning commission, they get. You know, comments from, they involve the police department, they involve comments from planning and. Um, you know, and, and so a, a lot of people are involved in making such a decision and not just. You know, the burden is on the city manager. So I hope you understood my presentation, just a quick one there. Any questions for me?
So are we reversing this, uh, resolution and go back to where it used to be?
Well, we.
Or does that have a modification?
Yeah, we, we reverse, uh, so basically PCN is gonna, if it's a new application. Now, we're gonna go back to the way it was, that both.
Okay.
Yeah. New, if it's a old application and just change of ownership, they don't need to go through the CUP, then it could be done. Um, the new way and that's going through the CM.
Well, you'd like to make a comment, um, you know, thank you very much for bringing this, uh, issue. Um, item on the agenda because I remember this very well. Uh, I voted, uh, against this, uh, uh, was that last May? Uh, because I, I didn't think that was right because lack of check and balances. And this one person had too much power to issue, issue liquor license and it just, it just open up for corruption. It is not acceptable. So thank you very much for reverse the decision and, and bring this item back on the agenda for the city council to reconsider. And I, I totally support this because I don't, I don't think it was right. And back in May and I don't think it's right now, so thank you.
Well, thank you. And so I moved to approve six point one.
Second.
Second, okay.
I just wanna say real quick, uh, thank you, Councilmember Ho, um. I'm not gonna re- repeat everything you just said, but everything you just said was the reason why I voted against it the first time. And the same, uh, uh, echoing Councilmember Doe. Um, you know, that opened the door for corruption, so, um, thank you again for bringing it back and. And reconsidering this very bad decision that happened back in May. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for correcting that.
Mr. Mayor? I just wanted to clarify one thing for the motion, um, it, the general rule is that this. Almost all of these will go to the planning commission. The limited exception. Is for a situation where somebody already has a CUP, so they've already gone through the process. is for a situation where somebody already has a C U P, so they've already gone through the process of public hearing, there's already been a discussion about oversaturation, et cetera. But they're, they're basically just transferring the business. The way it's drafted right now, the resolution that's proposed, it would in those situations where an existing business is simply trying to transfer to another person, there's already the impact, the same impacts are gonna be happening. The, yeah, I have the Community Development Director making that decision, and then they have to report after consulting with the Police Department. Um, and then they have to report when they do that sort of thing to the Planning Commission at the next meeting. Um, do you wanna change that from the Community Development Director to the City Manager, because I know you had, you mentioned that? Um, so I just wanna be clear in the motion. Is the person who makes this decision and then reports it to the Planning Commission the Community Development Director or the City Manager?
Who, who do you think would be appropriate? I mean, my, my thoughts would be maybe this, the, uh, Community Development Director, what do you think? Christina Shay is nodding.
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate. I think, I think that's, uh, totally appropriate, and I have one question, um, um, Mr. Rakke. Um. The P D has, or, you know, lately, um, they changed the policy to, um, provide crime stats without, um, liking recommendation. Um, I, I talked to A B C, my sources, A B C in Orange County, and they, you know, they do rely on the recommendation of the local police department to make necessary, um, um, decision to whether to grant the, uh, the, um, the permit or not, uh, because they, the, the local P D uh, know the in and out of, uh, all of the establishment, you know, high crimes and all that stuff. So do you need the recommendation from the P D to make the necessary decision, or you just accept the crime staff report from them and make your own decision? What do you think?
Well, the, so thank, thank you, uh, Councilmember Doe for your question. I, I, I would say that it's always appreciated in the planning process, uh, when the other departments, such as Public Works, when, when it's relevant to Public Works, or, or Police, when it's relevant to Police, give us their recommendations. Uh, because, uh, that allows us then to forward that on to the Planning Commission. And in the case of alcohol licenses, we don't have, uh, with the exception of very few instances, uh, most alcohol licenses go before the Planning Commission, so ultimately, the recommendation that's coming from the staff is a, is a joint staff recommendation from all the different departments, not just from the Planning Department. Um, uh, Police Department did make a, a change in their, in their, um, policy, I believe, last year, and before that, they were making a little bit more, uh, actual firm recommendations as far as conditions and whether Planning Commission may wanna consider approving or denying. Uh, but currently, what they have done for the past, um, roughly, I wanna say. Yeah, roughly about January, is, um, is to, is to provide recommend, recommended conditions, um, but not necessarily, uh, go beyond that, so i- it's, um, it's, it's their choice to do so.
Could you repeat the one you just said against a recommended one? I'm sorry.
Yes, they, they, what the current, what their current policy is, is to phrase their recommendations. Free. According that, if the Planning Commission chooses to approve it, we, we would suggest you include the following conditions. As opposed to, um, taking a position on approving or denying the application itself. And, and the Police Department, of course, I'm paraphrasing, that's why I apologize, the Police Department may be better to um, uh, answer more specifically, but that's, that's, uh, essentially uh, the change that's occurred a- about a year ago.
So, it, so what I'm, um, what I'm hearing is the, uh, Planning Commission and um, the city staff would welcome the expertise of the Police Department, uh, in term of making, making recommendation as to yes, no, maybe, none, any above, uh, and that will, uh, certainly help, uh, city staff to make a well-educated decision rather than that, hey, here the, the crime stat, do whatever you want with it. Is that a fair statement?
Y- yes, but I, what I would add to that, that, um, the Planning Commission always benefits, um, in my opinion, uh, when there is a clear recommendation, uh, one way or the other.
Okay, what does it take to resurrect that, the, um, that, the recommendation of the Police Department?
I, I honestly don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Hmm, does anyone know? Christine? Can the city manager, um, implement that, uh, change, and can we add that into the motion?
Without knowing how that was implemented to begin with, um, I'm not sure if I have the authority for that, if it's, you know, maybe Christian can help me out if there's me.
Because we had, we did it in the past, right?
Yeah, don't know how it was implemented in the past, like.
We could, we could certainly add it to what the motion, um, I think it would be helpful to get, uh, P D's input on
If I can chime in there, I think that change happened while I was still on the Planning Commission, and it was, you know.
Because of leadership?
Years ago, two years ago, yeah, when we had our previous police chief, uh,
Okay.
What's the name, Lauterback was here.
Okay, so we, uh, we did it in the past. And, uh, the change only happened, uh, yeah, because, you know, I, uh, we, the, the, the Police Department have an expert, so who work closely with, uh, with A B C, and, uh, they can certainly provide insight uh, to assist the city, um, to fairly, uh, granting, um, uh, licensing a permit in term of, uh, A B C, uh, because it's related to public safety, so I certainly uh, would, uh, like to include that in the, uh, um, motion if, uh, Councilwoman um, Kimberly Ho would like to modify the motion.
Do we need to hear from, should we hear from?
Because they did it in the past, right?
So, yeah, so let me put, so let me put the chief on, so he has lost his connection. So it's gonna be odd, but if I put him on speakerphone through mine, so you can at least hear him. Chief?
Can't see.
Can't see, cuz it's. It's, you know, you gotta go with it, right?
It's FaceTime, FaceTime.
Do you wanna, do you wanna FaceTime it? We can FaceTime it.
I'm, I'm scared if I hang up, I'm not gonna get any, I don't wanna call in.
Okay, all right, so go for it. Can you guys hear him?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, chief.
Um, and, and I'm sorry I lost my connection, uh, right in the middle of this. Uh, but yeah, from, from the police perspective, we would be happy to supply any requested statistics, explain those thoroughly, uh, deliver their, deliver that information to the Planning Commission and/or City Council for you guys to make your decisions, uh, pertaining to any establishment you might be looking at. Uh, in, in addition, we are working on, um, a, a written policy regarding this as well.
Okay.
You know, the, 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 the chief, uh, uh, the, the question was, um, we would like to, um, um, make a motion to have the, um, Police Department, especially the Vice Detail, to continue to provide um, not only the crime stats, um, saturation, but also recommendation, I mean, you know, my, you know, just a, that's a general recommendation, yes, no, maybe, none of the above, or you know, plus or minus maybe, um, it's, so that we can, um, fairly, it's a way that we can fairly um, a formula, if you will, to, uh, help the Planning Commission to um, have a bearing to, uh, whether, uh, approve or disapprove a, uh, permit for public safety issue. Is that something that you can, um, achieve?
As, as far as the Police Department making a recommendation, I believe those decisions are better off when we, we just present facts through statistical data on, on crime in an area or, uh, associated with an establishment, and the council or the Planning Commission that's specifically put together to make these recommendations, uh, that they have that kind of authority. Um, uh, of course, if the council voted to have the Police Department make some kind of recommendation, we would try to put something together, but right now, uh, and, and having dived into this area uh, over the last month or two, um, and contacting many other police departments, uh, there isn't much guidance on, uh, or, or written policy on police departments making those kind of recommendate, ma- making those kind of recommendations, nor is there any guidelines on what would make you make those recommendations or not, and I can see the Police Department getting put on in the middle of this a lot, well, why'd you approve this business, not that business? They both have similar types of crimes near them, and, and, uh, you know, the, the, I, I don't think that would really serve uh, the entity of, of law enforcement that's supposed to stay neutral on these issues. Um, but like I said, you know, if the council, uh, wishes us to, to try to come up with something, we would try.
You know, I'm not, it's, you're, you're, the, the P D, uh, recommendation is not final, it's just, uh, give a general bearing, uh, if you will, for the, uh, Planning Commission to have at least a direction to go. Uh, it's not gonna be final, um, so, um, but, you know, it's just, so just like I say, the, the, uh, uh, A B C, well, of course, it would depend on the expertise of the local Police Department to get the insight of what's going on in, in, and, and in these, uh, A B C regulated establishments, so I, I, I would, uh, I would believe that, um, you know, some providing a bearing for the Planning Commission to, uh, make the finer decision would be, uh, appropriate, and, uh, so, thank you.
I, I, I do think that if there was a checks and balances, where it wasn't the Police Department burdening, uh, with the burden of deciding which businesses get a business license and which ones don't, um.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that would definitely help, but I, I do not wanna put, and I know other departments are not, uh, in, in the business of telling, um, uh, which businesses, uh, would get a, a permit and be able to make a living or, or not, I don't, I, I do not think that is the role of the Police Department, nor do I see any other police departments taking that role.
Yeah, I really agree with the, uh, chief that in regarding, you know, uh, uh, making any, making any decision on a business, because, you know, I believe that in the Planning Commission meeting, there will be, uh, there will be one person, like, police officer from the Police Department going to present a case to explain, you know, area whether or not it had a high, uh, crime. So, the commissioner will, based on all the data or information from the Police Department and come up with the, uh, decision. So I totally agree with the chief that, I mean, like, it's kind of really weird that us to put a chief, you know, into the situation that the chief had to recommend whether or not to approve or not approve, I think the Police Department, they going to present the fact on information of the area. So, I mean, I re- really appreciate the chief for standing fact, yes, thank you.
You know, in, in, in the past, it's, uh, historically, the, uh, Westminster Police Department has been very active, uh, in, in that, uh, in that area, they make recommendation, they come to speak to the Planning Commission sup- in support and oppose, uh, uh, some establishment in the past, I don't remember which one, when. Uh, but that's something that happened in the past, so there was no problem back then, um, the, and, and the the, the whole purpose of that was a public safety, uh, concern. And, you know, when, I, I, I believe that in, if it's, uh, there's an issue of public safety, um, I'm sure that the Police Department would, would not hesitate to step up and, and, and voice a concern, because something we approved, uh, uh, an A B C license of permit in an area where we're gonna generate a lot of call, high, uh, it's gonna affect the, uh, the, the, the Police Department, so um, certainly, you know, to me, uh, the recommendation, um, is much needed from the Police Department, a recommendation is a recommendation, it's not a, a, a definitive approval. It's just help the guy, the Planning Commission, who had no idea what it means to high crime, low crimes, what does that means? Is it high crime, I'm randomly gonna, uh, you know, disapprove, dispermit? Well, you, you, you know, so, because I, I talk to A B C, and they, they need to, they need the expertise from the Police Department every single time, so I think that we need to have, uh, the P D getting involved, at least give their professional opinion. Um, you know. Thank you.
Is it, um, Councilmember Doe or, or, or city attorney, is this something that has to be a separate, you know, it's standalone item? This, this, this topic, or, or can it be tied in, should, should it be tied into this P C N?
It can be handled either way, you could seek to include something in this, or you could handle it separately later on.
You know, for years, when I was on the Planning Commission, I always looked for the recommendation from the Police Department. And that was always helpful, although, um, I mean, especially for the junior planning commissioners who've come on board, and they don't have a whole lot of experience, and they definitely could use that as a guidance. Um, but of course, with it, I, I need to have all the data, uh, so I know where he's drawing the data or his conclusions from. And, um, and I, I, I think as long as we know that those are just recommendations alone, um, then, you know, it doesn't bind, uh, the Planning Commission from, you know, to, to that recommendation. So, but it certainly is, um, uh, shall I say, you know, when it comes to P D crime area issuing A B C license, especially to a saturated, uh, track, um, I would say, you know, you don't wanna, you, you don't wanna gamble. So you kinda want, as, you, you know, I mean, I don't wanna say opinions from everybody, but opinion from the right folks, and that would be P D, I mean, at the minimum. So, so I think it would be helpful, more than hurtful. Um, and I think our P D will act in a very professional manner, and not gonna, you know, they're not gonna side with any particular, um, you know, company or, 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 yeah, applicant or whatnot. So, I would say, if we weigh all that, I think the benefit of having P D um, chime in or do the recommendation like they, they used to, you know, when I was on Planning Commission, and I was on for three or four years, I always looked for that, and then I worked backwards to see if I, you know, if I can justify looking at it from the data they provided, and then, you know, so it always helps. So I'd like to see, uh, that come back again. Um, so I would, um, amend my, my motion to include a recommendation from P D.
Second. If, if I could, could I propose some language then?
Yes.
You could make this, uh, section five, and then move section five down to be six, and then seven. But it would basically say, the Police Department shall provide city staff with appropriate crime statistics with respect to the location of any business seeking a finding of public convenience and necessity, comma, and render a non-binding recommendation as to the appropriateness of the location in question, period. This recommendation is not binding, but will be used to help assist the Planning Commission in making its determination.
I, I'm.
Sounds good, though.
I think it's great, it's great, yeah.
It's just information to be used by the Planning Commission to make their determination.
Yeah, I think if you clearly state that on the Planning Commission's, uh, agenda, then I think they understand that this is really, really a recommendation only. And so the body that decides, yay, nay, will still be them, you know, still their responsibility.
Yeah, and, and, and the language I tried to use is to inter- or a non-binding recommendation as to the appropriateness of the location, because really, it's getting to the. Recommendation as to the appropriateness of the location, cuz really, it's getting to the crime statistics.
Yeah.
Saying, okay, in that particular location. Are, this may not be the best area, you know, they, they can decide how they're gonna phrase it, but, um. Rendering, it's not saying yay or nay, it's kind of saying, in our opinion, this may not be the best location, let's say. You know.
Yeah.
That's the intent of.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's perfect. Like that.
Do we have a motion in a second, then?
Motion was made by councilmember Ho and seconded by councilmember Doe. That was to adopt the resolution as amended entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster. Rescinding and replacing resolution number fifty forty establishing the appropriate decision-making authority. Regarding determinations of public convenience or necessity as required by the California Department of Public Health and Beverage Control. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Nguyen, are you still on?
I'm sorry, I haven't on mute. Um, I haven't said anything yet, but for the record, before my vote, um, before I vote. Is that, uh, I remembered that several cities, uh, at the time that we adopted new uh resolution, which is five zero four zero. Uh in May, I know that several cities having the same policy. Uh it was presented by this, by staff, that's why we, we have make decision uh, uh, as such. Um, and I'm looking at the resolution num- number five with zero forty, which is the current uh resolution that we have here. Is, uh, whereas in order to promote the efficient use of the city resources. The determination of public convenience and necessity in any situation shall be made by the city manager. If the si- if the site has obtained all necessary land use entitlements under. The city's munis- municipal court. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council hereby rescind. Resolution number three, three, zero, four, which is the one that we are trying to, to, to reverse now. And replace it with this resolution to authorize the city manager to make determination of public convenience and necessity. After consulting with the police department and planning divisions. It's very clear, and, you know, that's all, and then my vote is no.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
I have to go no because, you know, I agree with councilmember Nguyen, you know, yeah.
Okay, that motion carried three, two with Mayor Ta and councilmember Nguyen voting no.
Alright. Alright, uh. Last but not least, we have common from city council agency member, including A B, one, two, three, four, report when required, alright? So it's like, uh, twenty minute to one, so, just up with the council, yeah, if you want, we'll share your comment, okay?
Yeah, you can, uh, I, if I may, I can go first. Um, you know what, uh, it's, uh. You know, right now, we, I'm looking forward to, uh, to the Ted parade, and I just wanna thank the city council for. Uh approve that uh permit for our community can have a Ted parade. Now, to be honest, I don't care who's uh the organizer would be. Uh, you know, we have two Ted parade a couple of years ago, and I had a great time, I mean, you know, I have one in Westminster, which was awesome. Uh simply, you know, the next day, go to garden grow and uh had a great time, so. Um, I wish, so we have two this year, but unfortunately, only one can do that. Um, so, uh, I just wanna take this opportunity to thank. Uh, the city staff and, uh, and, uh, the police department, you know, all the men and the women of the police department. Uh, you, you're facing a tough time, short, uh, staff, working doubles, constant overtime. To cover, uh, the public safety for the city, so. Just wanna say thank you. Um, and thank you for all your hard work to, just, uh, just to plan. Um, to have body Ted parade that happened on, uh, February fifth, uh, uh, next week, so. Um. Um, and, 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 and again, you know, there's a, unless, um, I just wanna make this comment, that's, uh, you know, a lot of fake news out right now. What's going on in the Vietnamese, um, uh, media, it's continued happening. Um, and it just, uh, just separate and dividing our community and cause so much problem and, uh. It just had to stop, I mean, you know, this community is facing enough pressure, so much suffering right now already. And we cannot continue to do this, so as a, as an elected official of any city, if you're Vietnamese American elected official, you be able to speak the language. Uh step up and stop this madness, um, stop the fake news. Uh, it's just like, you know, it's just like, uh, um. Media terrorists, let's, uh, let's, they attack our community, that's very unfortunate, so. Please speak up, um, if you hear something wrong, um, fake news, especially, you know, we're calling, uh. Our elected official racist or anything that untrue, please speak up. You know, any members, the Vietnamese American, please speak up, so help us. Uh moving forward, we need to put the discipline highest, we cannot continue to operate as a community, thank you.
Alright, alright, but, but next, our councilmember, oh, vice mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, yeah, I just wanna say, um. Thank you to staff for all your hard work, the same with the P D, uh, with all the. A mandate to, to cover all this short staff and. The, and, and, uh, thank you for all you do for, you know, for our community and. Trying to help us with some of the challenging issues that we have, like the homelessness. Thank you for the chief for, um, helping out, um, with this last issue we had, um. Yeah, let's keep it short, I wanna, um. You know, kinda echo what councilmember Doe just mentioned about. Uh, was dividing our, our, our city yet. It's very, very bad, and we, they, they need to change, you know, we need to just focus on our community. And just stop all this, all this divisionist that's going on. Um, just get back to focusing on, on what's really important. So, thank you all and have a good night.
Alright, uh, next, our councilmember.
Um. I guess I'll go next, um, well, I'd like to thank, um. Is that Marion Stein, is that her name, for the strategic planning session? Is that her name?
Oh, insider, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, I don't know if we thanked her, but, I mean, I think she, uh, the, the, um. Minute session went very smoothly, and, um, I, initially, I wasn't too excited to come to it, but. Uh, at the end of the, the session, I, I felt really good in that we, um. You know, uh, as a, as a, a council and as a city. Moving forward towards the same goals and the same direction, and so I'm very glad. Uh to have that behind us so that we can move forward and be on the same page. Um, I'm very excited to, um, pick them off one by one, you know, between now and June. And hopefully, if we keep, continue to keep our eyes on our, um, goals, you know. We, we hope to, to look back and, and, and say we did it, and, you know, I'm always. I, I always love goals and goal settings and checking off, and so I'm all about that. So I'm really excited, and I wanna thank, uh, Q, thank you Christine Corden for your. Leadership and for bringing that back, the strategic uh planning, which is so necessary, and, um. Um, I, I think, I, I just wanna thank all those, uh, the police chief for, for. For being so brave, um, you know, and signing up to come here to be our police chief as well as our. Our interim community development, I, it's just because of COVID, we. Haven't even shaken hands, I don't think I've even seen you, um, in person, chief, um, and, um. And, and then, of course, uh, I, I, you know, the interim, uh, city clerk and, and a lot of interns. So I wanna take this opportunity to thank you for coming on board and being, um, and helping us, you know, especially the H R department. I'd like to thank you also, so that's all I have to say, thank you so much and good night.
Alright, uh, any councilmember?
Yes, it's my turn, I believe. I, um, I just want to reiterate, uh. And reaffirm my concerns about the increasing number of people getting COVIDs. And thus was the reason why your last time that I present. And unfortunately, there was no amber in the time, uh, because our discussion was up to three o'clock. Uh, on the same day that it has to be turned in, and, you know, by the time I, I figure out, you know, to put that, you know, on the agenda is what. It was already expired, so that's the worst reason why I do it again today. And I want to make sure that, um, uh, I was never saying anything about Ted event or, uh, or, or, uh, parade event. I was never saying anything about it, I just want, you know, to co- to get an update from. Uh, the, um, the staff and also come up with a plan if there is any to, to, uh, you know. To, um, uh, inform our community. And. Today, uh, I already said, I already answered you, um, councilmember Doe. And, and I want to, and you all know from the last meeting, that I never mentioned anything about the Ted or canceling Ted event. But it is, I was floating and, you know, uh, for canceling the, the Ted, Ted parade. Which is, that's not true, that is not true, I don't know where the misunderstanding come from. But I urge e- every one of you, and also, you know, people who misunderstood. Can go back and review the video recording, I think it's still there for every one of us to, you know, to listen to and, and, and. Make it, uh, uh, you know, uh, 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 you know, don't, don't try to, um. Don't try to accuse people for something that they never do. And, you know, that's, that's not the right thing to do, I mean, you know, we are in the same council. And I think that it's better for us to share, uh, and, and, you know, speak up the truth and, and, you know, to share what, what is the. Good for our community, instead of, you know, spreading the, 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 the fake news, I did, I agree. But at the same time, you know, every one of us can also, you know, speak up when we heard the, the, the fake news. I don't know, right now, you know, I, I got people forwarding to me that, the. Then the, the, the news from the orange coffee, uh, you know, restaurant, I am speaking up right now. I, you know, there might be a misunderstanding from, from the person who wrote that article. But, you know, I'm not afraid to, to speak out loud, that, that was wrong, and I, I urge. You know, that person to go back and listen the tape, you know, and listen to the video, that's all I have, uh, uh, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, councilmember Nguyen, and I appreciate all the members of city council that you all share your. Uh concerns, as well as your complement to our, uh, city police. Officer and our city staff, I'd like to recognize, uh, one more time that, um. This year is really kind of really, um, different than in the past. Because, uh, our police department, we are short of staff. Now, with City Hall, we are short of staff because of the negative impact of COVID. So I, uh, I, uh, and. Lunar New Year is coming, so, uh, we all go to have a lot of celebration. A lot of, a lot of mega events, you know, in our city, in other city. So I encourage everyone to continue to wear masks, uh, and, uh, continue to, um. Be aware, I learned, to protect yourself, to protect your family, to protect your community. And I would want to thanks one more time, councilmember Nguyen, for trying to. Uh scheduling an O N G item, uh. Uh, COVID nineteen update, especially right now, based on the data from the county, from the state, from the country, that. The spreading, uh, Omicron is one of the most concerns that we all have. Uh, I hope that, I mean, I, uh, for the next few months. Uh, like Omicron or other variants, you know, will go away. I'm not sure that, you know, will happen, but I wish everyone are really safe. Really good, real lucky, um, year. And, um, happy Lunar New Year to everyone, wanna thanks our police officer. For working really hard about and beyond their duty, we are sharp of staff. So I hope that all members of the council, we should be mindful of what our city staff and our police department. Uh have to put up with, so, uh, thank you so much again, our police officer, our firefighters, our city staff. For. Working together as a team to make sure that, uh. Our community, we have events for celebration, the community going to enjoy. Uh, with all the good thing for the New Years, so happy New Year, happy Lunar New Year to everyone. And with that, the next meeting will be on Wednesday. February, nine, twenty, twenty-two, at seven P M.